Good afternoon.
How's everybody this afternoon?
Sir.
Good, yeah. Glad to have you here. This is Davis County Board of Commissioners, Monday, March tenth, Commissioners Meeting. Commissioner Shale will lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Those that would like to join me, I'd like to welcome everybody here and Xavier. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Father, we give so much thanks for the freedom to come together as a free people. So much thanks goes to you, Father, for the way you've looked over our nation all these years. Without you, Father, we would be nothing. Father, I pray for your wisdom, your strength, and your guidance to steer us as we move forward in conducting the business of the people. We love you, Father, and we thank you, for it is in Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Commissioner Shale, recognition of veterans, Commissioner McClure.
Yes, my dear. Do we have any visitors here today? If you do, we'd like for you to stand.
Veterans.
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 What did I say?
Visitors.
Got visitor too. They can be veterans, though. That's the one we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank y'all for your service, okay?
Gentlemen, if you don't have a pen, come up here and we'll give you a pen from the county.
He wants to give you all a pale pen, veterans.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
There you go.
Good for you, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I didn't know.
Good seeing you. Look good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Like it, sir.
Look at all, look at all the veterans.
Appreciate y'all. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Let's get them all in.
Amen.
Got a room full of veterans. That's nice. Thank you very much for your service. Xavier is next. Recognize the one up front on the front row, so if you don't mind.
Mr. Chairman, we have got Greg and Helen Grove here, who are the owners of Xavier, and his handler, who is Carlos Chacon. I hope I did not butcher that too bad.
Can you speak into microphone, Debbie? I'm not so sure everybody can hear you.
Xavier's now five years old. He won the Best of Breed and Speciality in 2024 at the National Bigle Specialty in Kingsport, Tennessee. He was the top breed at the American Kennel Club National Championship in December of 2024 in Orlando, and he just recently won Best in Breed for Bigle at Westminster Kennel Show in New York City.
Good job. That's awesome.
One, two, three. One, two, three. And one, two, three. Thank you. Is there anything you guys would like to say?
No, just thank you for having us and recognizing. We're just driving.
Nice to meet you. I will get you these pictures. Thank you.
That sure would be a good mascot for us. Kinda laid back. Don't seem to get too riled up. All right, register for public address. We have a sign-up sheet right here. If you'd like to speak later on, please make sure you sign this sign-up sheet. Adoption of the agenda. Mr. Smith, what is the revisions for tonight?
Mr. Chairman, need to add item for, I believe it's gonna show up on your list, Debbie, is it nine C?
Can you speak in the microphone? I can't hear.
Yes, sir. Nine C is gonna be adding the revision access from 109 to Silver Valley. It's the right-of-way access the state needs for us to get the Silver Valley MS base up and going. That needs to be added, Mr. Chairman, and then you can go ahead and, we can pull nine B, this information technology server replacement item. We think we can get better pricing on this item. We can hold off one more meeting, please.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move, Mr. Chairman, with the revisions.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries. All right. This gentleman gets through signing his name. We will bring the sign-up sheet up. Go through the public address. Thank you, Mr. Martin. All right, John Cox. School security.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff members, audience, parents, and citizens. My name is John Cox. I was here on January the 27th and presented 3D response as an alternative to the AI pilot program. So moving forward, after the meeting, I was approached by several parents. They were upset that not a lot of questions was asked about what I was here to speak about. So we put up a presentation, and some of the parents joined that on the Teams meeting, and they really liked what they saw. So I told them, I said, "You've gotta be vocal to the Board of Education. You gotta be vocal, I guess, somewhat to y'all." So I was also asked to speak at the Board of Education meeting, which I did. So things have kinda been moot up until Friday morning. So Friday morning, when I got up, I had numerous Facebook messages from parents who had seen our product and had informed me of what happened at West Davidson High School. So as I start looking into this, I basically told them, I said, "You know, y'all gotta go to the Board of Education." From what I understand, and Sheriff Simmons could probably elaborate a little more on this, but AI would not have detected these firearms, toys or not. So I was basically asked, "What can we do to get your system into Davidson County schools?" Coincidentally, this was planned about a week ago, so it's not like we're ambulance chasers. We actually done a presentation with Safety Director for Davidson County School Board, Travis Strout. He's former chief of High Point. He really liked the system, so the issue come down to funding. So I told him, I said, "You know, you've gotta go talk to your supervisor. Maybe talk to the Commissioners and whatnot." So I'm here because I was asked to be here by the parents to say, "Hey, we're still here." I'm here if there's any questions that y'all may have, that the parents may have, Sheriff Simmons may have, anybody else may have. Had these guns been real, or he had had a little more time, we may be having a different conversation here tonight. So I wanna do as much as I can to help keep these kids safe and make sure they go home at the end of the day. So if anybody has any questions after the meeting, I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Angela Lowe.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak. I just have a few questions about the sportsplex. I think it's on a lot of people's minds in Davidson County. I am going to ask some questions that have been asked of me just to relay them to you. About 10 years ago, we had a highly-paid study which indicated low public support for the sportsplex. Why are we not doing another study? Do the taxpayers really want this? Is there a public bond that would be out of question that could be put to vote? And why vote tonight with not a lot of public input? This was only made public just last month that we were moving forward, to my knowledge. And then another issue that I've been hearing is how much from the rainy day funds came from COVID funds? I know there's rules about how money can be spent. You guys are well-versed in that way more than I. Why were those COVID funds not spent on COVID issues back in 2020? The paramedics, we are short in this county, and it's not gonna make a hill of beans difference to anybody else until you or your loved one needs a paramedic, and only an EMT truck shows up. These trucks cost a quarter of a million dollars apiece and are often left sitting empty because we have no one to staff them. No one wants to come forward for fear of losing their jobs. Other counties took some of the money to raise the paramedic pay, EMT pay, to attract more people. We don't have enough to man the stations that we have, and now we're building another station or base at 64 and 109. I watched Fox 8.
Three minutes, ma'am.
Interview. I'm sorry?
Three minutes.
Okay. And I've watched the WXII-12 interview. So I just have questions, and my last question would be, from who did the county purchase the 350-acre property in Southmont? That's all we have.
Thank you, Ms. Lowe. We'll answer all the questions at the end of the comment periods. Next, Dawn Hash. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm speaking because of the sportsplex. I'm not against the young people because they definitely need something. I'm against raising taxes. We cannot justify raising taxes in this economy at this moment. We cannot tax and overburden our elderly. We cannot put them out of their homes because the tax will go up. As a real estate agent, Davidson County is a great county for taxes, and I appreciate every one of you. Randolph County is a great county for taxes. We get a lot of Guilford and Forsyth running from there because the taxes are so high. I'm concerned because, you know, the elderly can't go out. They're on fixed incomes. They can't go out and make more money. And I want to caution each one of you because you're all gonna be that old one day, and none of us wanna lose our property. And we cannot continue to overtax, overburden the American people. And I would ask, where did this money, where's it coming from? Because we have teachers that need raises. And I know you do a hard job, and I'm not here to accuse anybody. But what I'm asking you to do is put everything on hold because it's not the right time. It really isn't the right time. If the economy was booming, okay, fine. We can talk about the percentage. But even if it was .0001, it's too much. Right now, we've got too many elderly that can be put out of their homes. And thank you for allowing me to speak. One day, it may be you out of your homes.
I'm close already, I can tell you.
Yep, closer than you think.
I'm close as well.
Yeah, Mr. McClure said he's right there with us. Vince, you're gonna have to pronounce your last name, I'm sorry, but, yeah, I don't wanna mess it up.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioners and staff, for giving me this opportunity to speak. Appreciate everything that you guys do, and I'm glad I have an opportunity to talk about this tonight. I'd like to ask Chairman, there's three of us that are here. They're gonna be talking. We're splitting, we split up presentation into three parts. So I was wondering if we can get, instead of three times three minutes, if we can just all, the three of us can come up and take our, take nine minutes?
That's fine with me.
That's fine, okay. Well, let me go ahead and get started. And so we're here to talk about the sportsplex also. Davidson County is planning to invest approximately $65 million in a new sports complex located in Southmont. We're here tonight not to be either in favor or against the project, but to encourage the Commissioners to table the decision-making process on moving forward or not moving forward until more information is available, more specific studies have been done. There are several arguments in favor of the Davidson County sports complex, as we've heard in previous meetings, but there's also arguments against the sports complex that other concerned citizens may raise. First is the high initial costs. The $65 million price tag for the sports complex is a significant expenditure for Davidson County. Critics argue that this amount of money could be better spent on other pressing needs such as improving local schools, healthcare facilities, or infrastructure. With such a large investment, there is a concern that the funds might not yield the expected economic returns in the long run. Number two is uncertain economic impact. While the complex is expected to generate revenue through tourism and events, there's no guarantee that it will have the promised economic, promised positive economic impact. Three is long-term maintenance costs. The costs associated with maintaining a sports complex can be substantial. Ongoing expenses for staffing, facility maintenance, utilities, and repairs could strain the county's budget in the long run. If the expected revenue from events and tourism does not meet projections, then taxpayers are gonna be left to cover the shortfall. Repair costs from vandalism and rough usage of the facilities may also play a role. Number four would be a lack of demand or community needs. Some residents may argue that there's not enough demand for the type of sports complex that's proposed. There may also be concerns about whether it truly meets the needs of the local population. Number five is impact on local traffic and infrastructure. A large sports complex could lead to increased traffic congestion, especially during major events. The influx of visitors may overwhelm local roads, parking areas, and public transportation systems, leading to logistical challenges for residents and commuters. Additionally, infrastructure may need to be upgraded, potentially leading to increased costs for the county. Number six is inequity in resource distribution. Some residents say that the large investment in sports complex diverts resources from other community needs, such as affordable housing, mental health services, or poverty alleviation. The project may be seen as prioritizing recreation over addressing more pressing social challenges in the county. Number seven is risk of underutilization. There's a concern that the sports complex may not be fully utilized, especially if events do not draw the expected crowds or if it struggles to attract long-term use. If the complex ends up being underused, it could become a costly white elephant, draining resources without providing the anticipated benefits to the community. Opportunity costs. People may argue that the money and resources being devoted to the sports complex could be better spent on other initiatives that provide more direct benefits to the community, such as improving education, public services, and supporting local businesses. The opportunity cost of investing such a large amount in this facility may outweigh the potential benefits. In summary, while the sports complex has potential benefits, others may argue that it carries significant financial risks, environmental concerns, and social challenges, and that the investment may not meet the needs or expectations of the local population. Over the last two decades, several large sports complexes in the United States encompassing facilities for aquatics, tennis, baseball, and other sports have encountered significant challenges leading to the decline, closure, or demolition. These cases highlight the financial complexities municipalities face in managing sports facilities, underscoring the need for sustainable planning and community engagement to ensure economic viability. These cases underscore the complexities and challenges associated with maintaining large sports complexes in the U.S., including financial constraints, infrastructure aging, and environmental vulnerabilities leading to the decline or failure over the last two decades. Several municipal sports facilities in the United States have encountered economic challenges in recent years due to factors such as high operational costs, inadequate revenue generation, and financial concerns. And at this point, I'd like to have Hank Drenst take over.
Regarding Davidson County, the following specific concerns come to mind. There's not enough infrastructure to support this sportplex. Hotels need to be built. Restaurants, we don't have enough. Only a two-lane North Carolina aid to reach Southmont's sportplex. There's only one Marathon gas station, and it's already overcrowded. The highest population of the county will not use it due to distance. We'll take a look at the schools. Oak Grove Schools, Walburg Schools, North Davidson Schools, Davidson County Community College. Not to mention the YMCA will continue to accommodate and therefore compete. A county or municipality should never take on or replace the role of private business. It cannot scale and is simply not capable of running any business. There is consistent and continuous history and statistical data to support this. There is consistent and continuous history and statistical data to support this. The budget work session on March sixth, this last Thursday, at which I was present, mentioned in its slides that the county could borrow about fifty-four million dollars due to capacity in twenty-seven through twenty-nine. It states that there are potential dollars available for additional debt related to school projects. Spend, spend, spend. How can we become better stewards of the people's money and make a sincere attempt to save and get rid of the deficit? In the approved budget of twenty-four, twenty-five, it was reported that the soccer sports complex would cost about twenty million dollars in twenty-five. That was it, a total of twenty million. Where do these amounts originate in the planning process? They're also so well-rounded. Then in the approved budgets for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-four amounts rose to three thousand six hundred, uh, three million six hundred thousand, and the twenty-five amounts remained at eighteen million five. No costs is projected for twenty-six and beyond. Now for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, the project is being, being projected to run from summer twenty-five through the spring of twenty-eight, with the following amazing increase in cost. In twenty-five, two million eight, twenty-six, twenty-seven million nine, twenty-seven, thirty-four million two fifty, twenty-eight, nothing available yet, a total of, all of a sudden, from twenty million to sixty-five million. Then we talk about the ongoing expenses. It's only mentioned for the public, salaries and benefits, seven hundred sixty thousand in the first year. Then operating expenses, eight hundred eighty-two thousand in the, in year one also, making total expenses one million six hundred forty-two in the first year. There's no mention of aquatic chemicals and overall upkeep in, in the details, general maintenance of buildings and sport fields, additional safety concerns, expense of the safe, of the sheriff's department maybe, road costs and maintenance, marketing costs. How to bring these tourists aware of its existence as well as the locals. In-depth profit and loss studies with amortizations need to be performed and made available to the public. Also, only four full-time employees are going, going to be running this entire complex, per your data, and only twenty-eight part-time employees are going to help out, excluding contracts with pool lifeguards. How to run a complex, sports complex, on a skeleton crew and without executive leadership? I don't know how you're going to do it. Revenue for one year, for year one, is expected to be two million.
What are you at, is it Debbie's six minutes?
No, we're at nine minutes, sir.
Okay.
Is expected to be two million, a positive cash flow of only four hundred fifty-four thousand in year one. That over anticipated capital investment of sixty-five million, if it even stays at sixty-five. A flawed ratio. I'm an economist, been so for thirty years, at Vice President of American Express. I've gone through the numbers, they're flawed. It stated in the March sixth, two thousand twenty-five budget slides that revenue is based on similar type facilities. I tried to get the specifics today, but I was told that I had to go through a FOIA. There's no effort nor mention of any private placement to make this the endeavor at least that leans a little bit towards success. When companies have skid in the game, they typically come to a project with constructive criticism and a drive to make the project a success or stop it in time. Some of you are business people. Here we see a county government management believing that they can pull this off.
That's, your time's up, okay?
We have three minutes for.
It was nine minutes total.
Oh, that was nine minutes. Can I give you a conclusion, at least?
As long as it don't take, but just a second, okay?
No, sir. The conclusion takes about twenty seconds.
I think I know what the conclusion's going to be, but you get right ahead.
Well, considering all of the above, would it not be prudent, responsible, and great stewardship of the people's funds if the Davidson County Board of Commissioners were to postpone this entire project for another year and exercise some restraint by first exercising a real feasibility study open to the public with realistic economic impacts on the Davidson County entire community while researching a true want and need for such a sports complex? The county cannot afford the fiscal and economic failure of this magnitude. If we cannot even secure private investment to aid with the development efforts, then we should not take on this enormous project without well-educated studies to back it up. And the last sentence, if you were to be wrong in your decision to move forward on this project, can you handle the vast financial devastation to this beautiful, beautiful county we live in? Could you handle the consequences of being wrong? If not, please decide not to move forward yet.
Thank you, Hank. Okay, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, Danny Kirkman. How you doing tonight?
I'm good, I hope you are.
Not bad.
So, I won't need the three minutes. So, good evening, commissioners, I appreciate you listening to me tonight. My name is Danny Kirkman. I'm a small business owner, a real estate agent, and most importantly, I'm a husband and a father who cares deeply about the future of Davidson County. As the CEO of the Lexington Flying Pigs, I've seen firsthand how sports can unite a community, drive local businesses, and create opportunities for our youth. We have an incredible chance before us with this proposed sports complex. This isn't just about ball fields, courts, aquatic centers, it's about building our economy, our reputation, and a future where our children have opportunities right here at, in our, in our own backyard. Look at Lake Point in Emerson, Georgia. That one facility alone generates a hundred million dollars a year. The ripple effect for hotels, restaurants, and local businesses is far greater than that. A facility like this in Davidson County would bring families from across the region, fill our hotels, pack our restaurants, and create jobs, all while giving our kids a first-class place to play and grow. As a real estate agent, I know families look for communities that invest in their future. And as a business owner, I know investment in infrastructure brings long-term economic return. And as a father, I want to see Davidson County thrive so my children do not have to leave this county for opportunity. So, this, this is a chance to make a lasting impact, in my opinion, and I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me, try to keep that down, please. Samuel Antonelli, maybe?
I wish I had your hair, Sammy.
Good evening, I hope y'all are doing well.
Wait a minute, he just wishes he had a hair.
Um, I hope y'all are doing well. Thank y'all for allowing me to speak to y'all today. I'm here to speak in favor of the sportsplex that's happening. For those of y'all who don't know who I am, my name is Samuel Antonelli, I'm the head men's soccer coach at Oak Grove High School. First thing I just want to talk about is, I know there's a lot of misinformation out in the public. One thing I will say is, from my understanding, the money is going to be coming from an already approved project that was happening in Rowan County, but just happened to be scrapped. It sounds like fifty million dollars is already going to be coming from Rowan County. And from my understanding, it's something that we don't even have to pay back to Rowan County. So, from, from, from what it sounds like to me, it's essentially just fifty million dollars that's been given to us, for us to now use that sportsplex. And it sounds like the extra fifteen million dollars is coming from the cash reserves from Davidson County. That's something that I've seen, I just want to make sure that's very public. And from my understanding as well, this can be found in the county budget meeting that I think happened last month as well, if I'm not mistaken. But I just want to make sure that, that, that is well-known, that you, that it is public information, you can find where the money is coming from. Moving on, I, I just want to talk about my experiences. I am, I am a product of this community. I went to West Davidson High School, class of twenty-fourteen, born and raised in Lexington my whole life. I still live in Lexington, I live right behind Lexington Barbecue. And like I said, I'm still involved in the community. I'm not just a coach, I'm also a referee, a referee at a very high level. I can speak, I can speak about how, what other complexes have done to the surrounding areas. One thing I will say is, Davidson County is the only county in the surrounding areas that does not have a soc, not just a soccer complex, just a sports complex in general. Guilford County has one, Rowan County was going to have one, but they did eventually scrap that, but that money's going to come to us. Forsyth County has one, Randolph County has one, Zoo City Sportsplex is something that just got built. It's been around for about three or four years now. From my understanding, it has brought leaps and bounds of money into, into that economy in Ashboro, and it's now created a thriving economy in Ashboro. Moving on, so, like I said, you know, I, I am involved in Davidson County schools as well. One thing I can say is that the impact and the talk that this has had with the kids has been monumental. The kids have never had an opportunity like this before, myself included. I played for the local club growing up myself. We never had this opportunity before. So I know, speaking from the kids, this is something that they are looking forward and wanting to happen. This is not just coming from Oak Grove High School, this is coming from Ledford High School, North Davidson, West Davidson, Central Davidson, literally every single high school in the county, and every single kid is on board with this. One thing I also want to talk about, there is a ri, a rising crime in drug use with our local kids. This is an opportunity.
Three minutes, sir.
To give these kids something to, to be able to get out of those environments. Lastly, to end on, the amount of tourism that this, this will bring is monumental. I can speak firsthand, like I said, I referee as well in local clubs. This, the amount of tourism and the amount of money this brings in is crazy. One of the biggest things I've heard of, talked about is hotels. There are other sportsplexes in the area as well that also have the same issue. There are surrounding areas with hotels and stuff like that, that, that can be perfectly accommodated for, for situations like that. Last but not least, like I said, this is something that I can just see just being a huge benefit for the community, and I'm really looking forward to seeing this happen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, okay, appreciate it. Tom Bean Blossom? Oh, I'm sorry, Jonas Nader? Yep. I, I circled too quick, okay? I'm going through the list pretty fast.
Just Jonas Nader. Hey, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm not going to get a hair comment, I guess, that's unfortunate, so.
Nice, you're mine.
It's spinning as I age, yeah. I'm thirty-two now, I'm a little older than Sammy, so it's going downhill fast from here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonas Nader, for those of you that don't know me. I actually run the classic soccer program for DCYSA. I took that role over two years ago, and we've grown from four teams to ten teams in the span of two years. Sadly, I had to turn down some teams this year because we didn't have the field space for it. We went from about a hundred and twenty kids trying out last year to two hundred and forty this year. That's for me going to doors, knocking, knocking on doors, going to different schools, saying, hey, we got a soccer program in Davidson County, that's new. And we've just exploded in growth. And we've got kids, you know, we average like fifteen kids trying out per team, and we're destroying teams from Greensboro, Winston-Salem. We had nine teams play last fall, all winning records, five teams got promoted. Just seeing the growth of soccer has just been fantastic. But unfortunately, we're running out of field space. Like, I've played on every patch of grass in the county, I've played behind Ticket Elementary, I've played at Churchland behind the graveyard, I think I've damaged my car several times going down that road, wrecked that road. So, field space has been a huge challenge, and you're talking about a hundred and fifty players in my classic program, I'm not including the rec program, they can get close to two thousand players in any given year. And if you go to those events, they are packed full every single weekend. There's food trucks, there's people parking two miles down the road just to go to those fields. We need this complex. And I'm not just talking about soccer. The growth in flag football, I've got Michelle Simmons behind me, has done a tremendous job in flag football. The growth in baseball with the Lexington Pigs is going to be astronomical. And I was an economics and finance major at Gardner Web University, and I've done the economic impacts of all these sports complexes. They bring in so much money. The hotels will follow, the restaurants will follow. We're talking millions upon millions of dollars per year in economic impact. That's going to increase our tax base, and that's going to benefit everybody, local business, schools, you're going to have more money to throw at other aspects of the government as well. It just seems like a win-win. And yes, I'm a director of DCYSA, but I'm also a father. I've got a seven-year-old daughter, Elsie, beautiful daughter, she's played soccer. I've got a five-year-old son who, who thinks he's a dinosaur on the soccer field, but by the end of the game, he has everybody roaring, and it just turns into Jurassic Park. But I just love seeing those kids play. And if you went up to them and asked them, it's like, what kind of fun things can you do in Davidson County? It's a struggle to name a few things, right? If you want something fun, you go to Dan Nicholas Park, you go to Ashboro for the zoo. Davidson County needs more things for the kids. I'm not going to take them to children's vineyards, me and my wife love it, but I'm not taking, I'm not taking my kids to the vineyards, right? Like, we just need more things for the county. And I know Thomas Marshburn's going to retire in fifteen years, one of the best parking rec directors around. Y'all got to do this while he's still here. Y'all see in that complex that he proposed, it is insanely cool. And we're looking at the economic impacts of complexes that are way smaller and offer way less sports. This thing has something for everybody. It just seems like a no-brainer to me. And I did watch the county budget meeting, I'm one of the few people that actually watches the YouTube streams every week, I like it occasionally for y'all. But the sports complex is how you get it done in terms of just bringing a bold vision to the kids. I've heard six of y'all speak out in favor of it. I hope your minds aren't changed, I'm just telling you now, the kids really, really need this, and I hope y'all listen. Vote yes, please. Thank you all, I appreciate all, everything you do.
Thank you, Bernie. Thank you, sir. Uh, Tom Bean Blossom, now it's your turn, I'm sorry. Got a little ahead on my list here.
That's okay. As one is also following.
There you go, brother. I'm going to take my hat off.
Oh. I come to y'all tonight in favor of the sports complex. And the reason I do that is because as a grandparent, I have a child or a grandson that's involved in travel soccer. The facilities that Davidson County has or does not have is solely needed. I've traveled to all the facilities, numerous ones, the Truist Park in Winston-Salem, Ashboro, the Zoo City Park, Ivy Redmond in Kernersville, Bryant Park in Greensboro, Wake Med in Meven, we've been there. As far as the financials are concerned, those parks make money because I have left money in each one of those parks. Every time that I go, I end up spending money to help assist the community. So, the revenue generated by those parks is there. The revenue that will come from those parks will be here, I'm sure, because as stated in all those parks I mentioned, they have a corporate sponsor. And I'm sure there's enough corporations around our area to help support this park. So, I wish, I hope, and with God's grace, y'all will approve this program tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bean Blossom. Kelly Gabbard, is that right? Good afternoon, Kelly.
Good afternoon.
Hope you're doing well.
I'm not for or against the sports complex. I would like to see the budget cut in half and start small and add to it as we profit from it. I have a granddaughter who plays travel softball. The average team fees are about fifteen hundred dollars. The average, average equipment and a bat bag, two thousand dollars. We got kids in this county can't afford it, okay? If I wasn't paying my granddaughter's fees, she wouldn't be playing, okay? She plays travel because there's better coaching in travel. Rec and the boosters are great, volunteers, whatever, but you don't have the coaching there. So that's why a lot of kids do go and play travel. So, but you also have to understand, I mean, I know there's a lot of soccer players, I never seen so many soccer players. You know, they back up, I, I live right behind Reed's Field, and I know they park in my yard, but, um, I just think that we're putting all of our money into something that we don't know is going to turn a profit. For softball, for example, most of us go to Concord. Top Gun owns those fields, there's nine fields down there. They're not going to move their tournaments here because they own those fields, okay? Additionally, we don't stay in hotels. Most of the teams that travel there come from about within two hours. We don't stay in hotels, we drive home. The kids in the car, they kick their cleats off, and that's it. So, I would, like, why, I think a, a complex like this is good, I just don't think that we should be spending all the money. Plus, it hasn't been really told to any of us where this money's coming from. So, I've been told that it's that the ARP, gee, whatever, COVID money. And if that's the case, then it, that's not what it was designed for. If you read that grant, nowhere does it say build softball fields or soccer fields. So, how did we switch this over to local funds without using it for what it was intended for? Now, my granddaughter goes to West, not West, she goes to Tyra Middle, and like, it's going to take the rest of my time. Where's Sarah Simmons at?
He's on the back row.
Thursday and Friday, we had gun incidents at the middle school. There was a shooting close to, um, the middle school. And I was on my way to get to that pickup line early because none of us like the pickup line. And I got passed by sheriff, so I was like, what's going on, what's going on? I got to that school, and there was two sheriffs standing out there protecting our kids. And the next day, we got somebody at the high school with a fake gun, apparently he had brought a knife before, then the students were saying it was real. had brought a knife before, then the students were saying it was real, they were playing with it in the bathroom, beyond me. But, uh, I would like to see if we have this extra COVID money go into some way, like Mr. Cox's program, to protect our kids. Because they're not gonna make it to the ball field if they're getting shot up in school. So, we need to invest money in these schools. West Davidson, I don't know how many hundreds of houses y'all have approved, but there has not been one increase in a teacher, in a classroom, anything, but yet there's hundreds more students. But, you know, I, I know people at the high school, they said their kids are eating on the floor because there's not enough table space for their kids to eat lunch. So, can maybe take another year and say, "You know what, let's take half this money, develop it slow, build your pool or your volleyball courts or soccer fields, soccer fields."
Okay, ma'am.
See how much money comes in. And then from there, add on to it, since you got the land.
Thank you very, thank you very much, and we'll answer some of your questions here after the comments and, uh, all right. Mike, uh, Linden, Lydon?
So, good evening. Um, my name's Mike Lyta, I'm an adjoining property owner to the sports complex. I have just a couple of quick points or questions I hope you consider. Uh, the first one is, I got no notification of this meeting. I got no notification of anything that was going on with this property and the development of it. Um, it seems like that should be something that you would want to reach out to, um, to me and other adjoining property owners who are here tonight. Uh, so that's the first one. Um, second point, developers are going to benefit from this. Please don't put all the burden onto the taxpayers. Um, the developers are gonna end up taking large tracts of farmland and popping up houses. They're gonna do that. They should help pay for, for this park. Um, third point's traffic, just gonna increase the traffic. Um, I hope you guys are gonna consider putting in a roundabout at Lynnwood-Southmont Road and at Owen Road. Because we've already heard the reports of parking two miles down the road and things like that, so we know there's gonna be, um, traffic. Uh, the last one is, I've heard a lot of rumors of there being an RV park as part of this. Um, and I totally understand that the, um, you know, parents of, of kids that are coming to this, that would be great if they can come and park and spend the night and not have to stay in a hotel room and things like that. Understand that completely. Um, but I've also heard reports from other places like this where they put in RV parks, all very well-meaning, but then people come and they stay. And then you end up with homeless people living in an RV park. And that would be basically in my front yard. Okay? I, I hate to be a "not in my backyard" person, but-
No, no, you're, you're fine.
But that is a concern for the neighbors that live around it, so.
We'll answer your questions too at the end, I'm sure. Casey's jotting them down here and, uh, we'll-
Great.
If, if we miss one, uh, we'll try to catch it up. But I think we have mostly concerns covered, but-
Great.
Thank you, Mike, I appreciate it. Uh, Ray Luckett?
My name is Rea Luckett, and the property right next to me is where the park would go. My concern is the neighborhood at this time and the surrounding neighborhoods have one way in and one way out. A lot of seniors. I'm all about the children and all about the games, I'm a grandmother, and I raised my children, but I don't wanna forget the people who live there and ha- they walk their dogs and, and, and the trailers or campers or whatever. I've seen the big ones, I come from Southern Maryland, where they have to have police to get in and out, the traffic. Dan Park, all these, Dan Nicholas Park and all these places have wide traffic ways to get in and get out. We have one little road, and it's gonna be just like coming out of Ollie's or Tractor Supply on the weekend, and that's it.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. Chris Bissicker?
Thanks for letting me come up here, guys. My name's Chris Bissicker. Um, I live approximately five miles from the proposed sports complex. I am also the vice president of Southmont-Southwood Boosters Club, which is in that area, treasurer many years before that. Um, I am for the sports complex, as we have a great need for sports for our children. Currently, our children base in our boosters club has more than doubled in four years. We have no facility space for our kids to practice. We're, we're to the point now where we're gonna have to turn kids away from playing sports because we don't have basketball courts, we don't have baseball facilities, we don't have soccer. And keep in mind, we're the second largest in the county in booster clubs. All the others' booster clubs have, you know, much larger fields and practice facilities than we have. We have one that has lights. You try to practice as many teams as we have, approaching a thousand kids, doesn't happen, guys. We need it for our community, we need it for the kids. I'm born and raised in Lexington, own a business in Davidson County, um, do a lot for the kids, and so does our booster club. And we feel that it's, you know, we need it for our booster club, guys. We need it for the kids, we need it for the community. It'd be a, you know, a big impact, both economically and for our children's lives. And I think, you know, a lot of people here know that, and hopefully y'all will vote to approve that. And that's all I ask y'all to do is vote for the kids. It's all for the kids, guys. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Jonathan Cochran?
Evening, guys. How are y'all? Um, thank y'all for letting me have this opportunity. Um, I'm too born and raised here in Davidson County, live within approximately five miles of the proposed location of the sports complex. Um, I think the most important thing is realize it's just not about sports. Um, it's about the families. Um, with some of the different things I've seen on the proposals, um, my kids love the splash pad. Uh, this is stuff that you can go have Saturdays with your family and not have to drive to Dan Nicholas Park, or have to drive to Ashboro Zoo, or have to drive to Emerald Point over in High Point. We can have it right here in our county and keep those dollars in our county. Uh, this is a good family value, uh, for Davidson County to add. The revenue impact from this, uh, would be absolutely amazing for our county. Anything we can do to hedge our bets on creating tax increases when we can generate revenue, other ways, this is a good vehicle to get us there. I think it's a great opportunity too for high school, young adults, job opportunities. Um, they would fit in very well. Uh, a lot of the younger generation, I know, they don't have the best interpersonal skills in working with people as much as their own technology all day long. Uh, this is a great way to get them out in the public and, uh, fitness and interact with the public to build customer service and life skills. A lot of times you hear in Davidson County, people always say, "Well, there's nothing to do here." I've heard one other, uh, person speak on that, and I've heard that my whole life, you know, "There's nothing to do here, people move away, they wanna go to Charlotte, they wanna go to Asheville, they wanna go to Raleigh, Winston, wherever it may be, is this is our chance to have something here that we can hang our hat on and say, 'Hey, we have this for our family, we have this for our kids,' and be in support of it." And it gives a reason for them to stay here and not go looking for the next biggest thing, uh, counties away or at the other end of the state. Um, from my understanding, it's gonna be cost-effective for the residents of Davidson County to come and participate in these activities at this facility versus people from out of state or out of county could be imposed a higher fee. I think that's a great idea to give us the cushion of coming and enjoying it since we're part of making it happen. Um, I also understand that our schools are in need of things. Um, however, I do think with the current Board of Education that we have, that's probably not the best place to put funds, uh, with some of their actions that we've seen, some of the facilities and the shape that they are currently in and struggle to maintain. Although they want to build a new approximately twenty-five million dollar administration buil- building, I don't think administrator people need to sit in a glass corner office to manage and do administration work for our schools. Giving money to that board, I think, is gonna go anywhere but to the teachers and but to the students where it needs to go.
Three minutes, sir.
Thank you, I'll wrap it up. The school board, from my understanding, has about eight point eight million dollars in their fund balance. It's approximately thirty thousand dollars a month in interest gains. They can't even buy mulch for my daughter's elementary school, which is right around the corner for this. They rely on boosters clubs, parents, and business owners to foot the bill for that. So, till they can manage what they got, I think we need to invest in the sports complex. Year after year, cost of construction goes up, so the time to do this is now and make it as manageable as possible for the, uh, for the cost and do it for the kids. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Ira Matney?
Good afternoon, folks. Uh, glad to be here. Uh, just, uh, let you know a little bit about myself. I've been at South Davidson, I graduated from South Davidson High School, I'm the current cross-country coach and the, uh, middle school, uh, track and field coach. I've coached about forty teams over the last fifteen years, uh, uh, anything from soccer, baseball, basketball, uh, cross-country track. And one thing that I think a lot of people aren't looking at too is cross-country right now, just for instance, for us, we were our conference champions this year, we were the county runner-ups. But in order for us to do that, I had to go to Salem Lake for practice, I had to go to Ivy Redmond Park for practice, I had to go to Dobson, uh, to get different, uh, places to run at. We, uh, had to go to McAlpine Park in Charlotte. And I'm talking about events that have over five thousand runners at one single event in a day. And each one of those people bring people with them, and they're bringing thousands of people with them. Uh, at one event, Friday Night Lights that they have in Kernersville, there's easily over fifteen thousand people attend that one event, and it is a one-evening event that goes from about four in the evening to about ten at night. Uh, the amount of revenue that could be brought in is astronomical. I'm a business owner in town, uh, also, uh, got six kids of my own, uh, and I think that our youth need something around here to do. Uh, we, and the other place we go run, we go to Rowan County, but like, here we have nowhere to go other than our local schools and stuff like that. We go, go to a lot of dirt roads and, and run sometimes, so I'd like a lot safer place to go, and it'd be an opportunity that we could bring a lot more people into our area, and I'm just, uh, I, I'm excited about. The only thing that I wish we'd done, it was ten years ago, whenever the thing was brought up the first time, it would've costed a lot less. And everybody that wants to put this junk off and keep putting it off, it's just gonna cost more. And everybody around here is doing it for a reason. Guilford County does it, Forsyth County does it, Randolph County does it, because it brings in money. And, uh, let's get some of it ourselves. Keep it here.
Thank you.
Yeah, the handwriting's a little tough for me sometimes. Be- beautiful handwriting, I just can't, uh-
Leftwich?
Leftwich.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, me and her both was wrong, so.
Sorry.
That's all right. Yeah, I'm your adjoining landlord, I think I've got your second biggest piece of property that touches this, minus the hardwood company. But I'm just concerned, I haven't got anything in the mail, a letter, or anything about this meeting. My neighbor Mike right here actually told me about it today at four o'clock, so I came from work straight to here. It just seems, I looked at Fred's speech the other day, this is too much money. It's just way too much. We don't have the infrastructure. You're gonna have to widen the road, you're gonna have to do something. All that takes my property out. I'm right on the lot, I'm right where your line's coming in, there's my property gone. I've got me and my son, we run a small ranch there, I have a full-time job. You've cut into everything we've done. My whole life is gone. I know I hear everybody talking about, "We're gonna go out here," they go too far to go play. But the other guys mentioned all these other places that are nearby. Why are we not using those? It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I mean, sixty-five million dollars is a lot of money. So, behind Southmont School, my son goes there. There's four or five acres cleared off, why are we not using that to practice soccer? My team does. It's not maintained by the county, I'm not sure why. I'm out there with my lawnmower, my paint, my time fixing this field for our kids. I don't see any of these other parents up here doing this. So, we can sit here and preach, "We need this, we need this, we need this." Why are we not looking at what we already have and investing in that? It's too much money, guys. I mean, it's way too much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Branded Sanford?
Yes.
This afternoon, yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, one of the big points is that I am pro, I'm all for this complex. I previously have worked along with three of the biggest home builders in Davidson County, excuse me, developers in Davidson County. And they have bought plenty of property that were close to other people's property, and this is nothing against Mr. Clayton back here, so, like, I understand completely. But if this property is gonna be purchased by someone, it's gonna be a developer that's gonna build a bunch of houses, which is going to, of course, increase taxes for every property owner in the surrounding area. So, if the prices of taxes are going to go up in any amount, let's at least let it be for something that's beneficial for our own county. Instead of us utilizing other counties for their fields, for their opportunities, to provide them with more money each and every time that we need to use one of their facilities, why should we not have our own? I have five children from the ages of two to seventeen. Every one of my children have played or is playing sports. Like, so I'm not a big baseball guy, I'm not a big basketball guy, I'm not a big football guy, my kids play soccer. But I still support every kid that's in our local boosters club. When I see them, I support them just like they were my own. We should all do this as a community, because the only thing that really matters, it's not that I've been here and have been born and raised in Davidson County my entire life. It's not about what I do for a living, it's about the future that I see my kids having, that I was never able to have. That my oldest son, that is now a senior in high school, didn't have all those opportunities to have. My four younger ones will, as long as we get this approved, we get this passed, and benefit all the way across the board. Teachers, yes, absolutely, they need more money. They never have been paid enough, in my, my opinion. So, the tax money that is being brought in from this complex, from my understanding, and I could be wrong on the exact numbers, but fifty-eight cent of every dollar that brought in is going to education. That's what we can utilize. So, we get the best of both worlds. Yes, we need more police officers, yes, we need more EMTs, we need more paramedics across the board. But if we can generate the funds and benefit the children in the long run, where does it hurt to pass this complex? As with any business owner, any person that has ever thought about getting into business has always heard the old saying, "It takes money to make money." We have this opportunity to bring that money back into our county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to, uh, Agenda Item 7A. We'll get around to the answers, uh, when we get to deliberation on that, uh, that subject. So, now we're gonna move into, uh, some zoning requests. Um, we'll start off with 7A. Res zoning request by William L. Hedrick in Lexington Township containing twenty-five point four-one acres from RA3 to CZLI. Mr. Crook, I know you're still getting, um-
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, indeed, our first rezoning request tonight is by William L. Hedrick. To rezon property in Lexington Township, tax map 325K, lots 5, 6, 7, and 8 containing twenty-five point four-one acres more or less. Said property is located on the east side of East Park Avenue, approximately a hundred and fifty feet south of the Robert Everhart Road intersection, also known as 427 East Park Avenue. Res zoning is requested to change from that of RA3, Rural Agricultural District, to that of CZLI, Conditional Zoning, Limited Industrial District. If the Board would plead, please divert your attention to the overhead, the property highlighted in blue are the tracts that are being requested tonight. This is East Park Avenue, as you can see, this is Robert Everhart Road, this is the old toy chest along 2970 to get you acclimated. Um, Mr. Hedrick has been operating out here for, for a little while, and I'm gonna let him elaborate more on that, uh, but he's got permits from the state and, and- Uh, but he's got permits from the state and, and some other things that he'll go into. Um, he is here to represent the application tonight. So once the, uh, public hearing is, is open, we'll invite him up to explain it a little bit more detail.
Okay, I declare the, uh, public hearing open. Uh, Mr. Hedrick, if you will, come and tell us, uh, about what you got.
Thank you. Uh, Lanny Hedrick, fifty-nine thirty, East Old Highway sixty-four in Lexington. I'm a contractor here and I've had this property for around eight years or so. Been operating, um, out of there, bringing some extra equipment there, some materials from time to time, extra pipe, et cetera. And I went to Mr. Crook at the time and asked him, I needed to get a, some power and some sewer. And he said, you know, you need to have this property rezoned. I've been using it like this for years and had really no complaints from neighbors that I know of and just doing as I please. And, um, so what we're looking for is CZLI to be zoned that way. And looking to build a building. I'm not sure if we've got a slide, Lee, to show the...
Absolutely. Th- this is the list of conditions, uh, that Mr. Hedrick has submitted as part of the application. Operate a heavy equipment business, recycle, recycle earth debris, hours of operation Monday through Friday, seven AM, six PM, Saturday, seven to one PM. Screen, screen fence for privacy. Install two security lights on each end of the property shining on to the prop, uh, shop and parking area. Um, this is a overhead aerial of the site as it currently is. Then this is a, uh, a map that Mr. Hedrick applied for us indicating the areas where certain things are taking place. Apologize for the, the, uh, resolution here. Um, he's looking at putting a proposed building in this location, parking for employees here. Again, this is East Park Avenue. This dead ends down at the railroad tracks. Um, outdoor storage of equipment, uh, some conxes to hold equipment. This is a recycling area and this is his entrance right here. Is that accurate, Lanny?
Yeah, that's accurate. Very accurate.
Is that the old Police Academy property?
The, the Police Academy is actually just off to the west. If you go down East Park, it does turn right there in Lee Smith Road, so you're in the right area.
Yeah, you take a right on Lee Smith and it's down at the end of there. See? Yes, I'm just looking, I wanted to build a building, didn't realize I needed to have it rezoned, so that's what I'm here for. Um, just looking to move my business out in that area. I do have a recycling facility permit for six thousand cubic yards. It's been monitored by the state. They come for an inspection every year. Uh, to see what I do, I bring in inert debris, uh, grind up the wood debris or burn the debris on site. I bring in concrete and curbing, extra materials from job sites and crush that to use it as base. Um, and then the extra dirt that comes in from the debris will use this field or screen it and take it back out as topsoil. So like I said, I've been doing this except for not having a building there. And I need this, uh, zone for a building. And, um, my conditions, as Lee just mentioned, were posted on the board there. So, um, this plan is prepared by, uh, somebody engineering. And we will have an erosion control plan that will be submitted once we get this approved from the county. And other than that, it's pretty simple.
Good deal. Any questions for Mr. Hedrick?
No, sir.
Hear none. If you don't mind sitting down on the front row, we'll see if anybody's in favor or opposition. All right, anybody in favor or in opposition that would like to speak on this matter? Come, please, sir.
My name's Malcolm Tester. And I own the property up at three A and around. I live up there. Been up there since oh-one. When Dolan Bowers purchased all the land Mr. Hedrick has now, we had a meeting down here. And he tried to cover up his perking test. Now that land perks, if he used to have a facility with employees there, he would have to provide bathrooms. But the thing of it was, was his facility, when he started doing this, I wasn't aware of any meeting that would change anything where he could mine, bury debris or whatever. Then they start hauling all this material out, going over towards the community college. Destroyed the road. Uh, the road was so bad, I had three cars that would drag on asphalt. I called the Division of Highways across from the, uh, prison camp out there, started to voice my concern and the man hollered at me. I'm sick and tired of people calling and complaining about that road. That road's not approved for trucks and stuff and we're not gonna fix it until they're done hauling everything out. And it's been like that ever since. You can't complain about something. He says there's no contact. I've never seen him. I didn't know who was running that. Never came knocking on my door. Hey, Mr. Tester, you got a problem with us up here? Nothing. The dust, the mud pack on the road is never addressed. I called about that. Even went down there. Uh, the trucks are off the road, right in front of my property on Robert Everhart Road. There is a huge rut now. It's not that far, two feet from the road, dropping about eight feet. Where these ruts have caused water runoff to wash out. I complained three times before the COVID thing to get this fixed. Nothing. No response, no trucks coming up, nobody to fix anything. The big dump trucks, they run up and down the road free. It's twenty-five mile an hour speed zone. There's a six and a half ton axle weight limit on that road posted. When you got fifty-ton lowboys coming up and down through there, you know, the road's rough. It's never been repaired as other than just spot patching. The part of East Park going out, uh, towards eighty-five, business eighty-five, is dodges rut, dodges rut, you know? It's an obstacle course. So I have a lot of opposition to this because this has been going on for years, back before COVID. Six, seven years is about how long it's been going on. Been a while. And, you know, it just falls in there. Dolan Bowers couldn't even build a house up there. This gentleman wants to build a facility like this in there. And I'm really concerned about it because number one, I fear it's gonna go through. I mean, he's gone this far with it, everything else. This is probably a done deal. But how's it gonna affect my tax? How's it gonna affect my property? All this extra traffic, how many employees is he gonna have up there? How many cars is gonna be coming, running up and down through there all the time? There's only six dwellings up Robert, uh, Robert Everhart Road. And there's not many more than that out of East Park. And it's incredible of the number of cars that run in and out of there and stuff. And how many more are we gonna put in there along with all these big trucks, six days a week? You know, it's, it's incredible that it got this far before it was ever called out. And the only reason it got called out is because he tried to get power. You know, I'm kinda at a loss. But I'd like to see you all do what's something right about it. And that's kind of put a squahitas on it. Maybe it shouldn't be so big. I don't know. I don't have the answers. Other than it's very offensive to me that it got this far without any input from any neighbors. And I'm probably the ones who's most affected to it because I got most of my property against it up there at the road and other people there. There's a young gentleman couple that had bought a piece of property. Uh, I would say it's the next one down from two A, probably one A. They had just recently purchased that back at the first of the year. Young couple, they don't know what's going on. Nothing. Uh, nobody lives, there's no dwelling on two A and I don't have none on three A. But we're a quiet neighborhood. We bought this because, we moved there because it was a bedroom community, you know? Peace and quiet. Not anymore. It hasn't been. And, you know, I, I would just like to know what can be done about it.
So which property is his, uh, Lee?
Mr. Tester lives on, he lives actually right here, but he owns three A. He owns both of these properties right here.
I got you. All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or in opposition? Come on, ma'am.
I live all the way down at the end of East Park Avenue. Name please? Pardon me, your name please? I can't hear good. Your name? My name is Ramona Yarborough. I live all the way down the end of the road. I didn't know the road was open past my driveway because I have a hole in my driveway this big and it's full of water most of the time where people come down the road and turn around. Now, the road was closed years ago from my house all the way to the railroad tracks. So when did it get opened up? I didn't get a letter. He said it went all the way to the railroad tracks a while ago.
Can you answer that question, Lee?
It, she's right. It does not run to the railroad tracks. The road used to go and cross the railroad tracks years ago and come back out over at Morton Buildings there on sixty-four. The old, uh, City of Lexington landfill used to be back there as well. But it, it has been cut off. The right of way is still shown on the tax maps. I don't know whether it's physically open all the way.
No, because people turn around in my driveway.
There are trees that, you know, you cannot get to the railroad tracks. She is accurate.
And where's her property yet in this?
Uh, I think she's probably off of the map down, are, are you at the very end of the road, Ms. Yarborough?
I'm at the very end of the road and they turn around in my driveway.
On the left side?
There used to be a sign up there coming up Robert Everhart Road, no turnaround. But Davison Water put the new water line through there. They took the sign down and I think it's still probably laying in the gutter somewhere.
Are you the last house down on the left?
I'm the last house on the road. The farther down the house, the meaner the people get and I live in the last house.
We, we need to get that lady signed back up. What we need to get.
She's off the map, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Okay, so when is, is the road open or closed?
Again, I'll have to refer to him.
The, the road stops where the asphalt stops.
Okay. Well, I need a sign put up, no turnaround. The only person that should be turning around in my driveway is me and the mailman.
We, we would need to communicate with NC DOT for that.
The road is so narrow, a big truck, lots of times have, I've had to pull over to let a big truck by. And I've been living over there a long time because I'm eighty-five years old.
Thank you, ma'am.
Before that, my grandfather had it, Mr. Uh, Yates has tried to buy the property in front of me, eighty-eight acres.
I have, yeah. Well, a few times anyhow. I don't know if it's a me, but a few times. Uh, if you don't mind calling DOT and seeing if they can get her a sign up, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
I look at that road.
Yeah, look at the road for sure. All right, anybody else wishing to speak in favor or in opposition?
My name's Jonathan Cochran. Uh, I'd like to speak in favor of this. I personally lived for about fifteen years within two miles of another facility that Mr. Hedrick's, Hedrick's coming from. And I, I know he was pretty respectable to the area. He didn't leave a lot of mud out on the road, didn't drag it out on the road. Uh, it was the same type of pipe material brought in and out. So I think you would be a good steward of the land and it sounds like some of the road concerns can be addressed by the DOT. Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor, come on up, please? If you would, just state your name there, please, and, uh, for the record.
Uh, my name is Daniel Johnson. Uh, I don't have anything really profound to say, but I'm the young man that owns the two A and I guess one A. And I just want to echo what Mr. Tester said, that some of the activities are disruptive. And so I just wanted to voice opposition. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else wishing to speak, speak in favor or in opposition?
Penny Tester. I'm Mr. Tester's wife. We live right across the road from this mess. Every day, these, these trucks fly up and down this road and this road's very narrow. We have to run off the road to get by because they won't. It's ridiculous. I pull out of my driveway, which is right around the curve from where they're at. I look both ways, there's nothing coming. I pull out and before I can make the complete turn, there's a truck on my butt about to hit me. My car stays filthy, the road stays filthy. I don't care what anyone says. Yeah, there is mud. There is mud all the time up there. And if it rains, Lord, I cannot afford to go to the car wash every day. I hate going to church now because I don't want everyone seeing my filthy car. It's too cold to get out and worship myself and I don't have a hose to do it with unless I pull around back. Then if it's raining, I get stuck. We live over a hill and yet even over that hill, we still get all of this dust from this. It's a mess. They have no respect for us. When we moved there, it was a quiet neighborhood. We really loved it. We intend on staying there the rest of our lives. Before that, we lived in Thomasville. We've been down here forty-one years. We consider this home. But I'm ready to move. I am fed up with it. I am tired of it. Nobody, the neighborhood doesn't get counted in anything. You all make your rules, you do what you want to do, but you don't put the people that's the closest to it. You don't take them into consideration. We're the ones that have to deal with this. You don't. He doesn't. He may come and do some work and leave, but at the end of the day, he's gone. We're left with a mess. I'm afraid to pull out of my driveway. No, I don't want this. And if I knew they were gonna do this before I moved in twenty-something years ago, I wouldn't have moved there. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else wishing to speak in favor or in opposition?
Can I ask, is Lee a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this road, um, paved?
It is.
But it's narrow, a narrow paved road, according to some of the discussion.
I, I rode out there today, two vehicles can pass on it. Now, I didn't run into a truck.
Okay.
It's not a one-lane facility at all. It did look like it was tar and gravelled, uh, as opposed to asphalt.
Uh, anybody else wishing to speak in favor or in opposition? All right, come on up.
All due respect, um, I feel compassion for the homeowners. Um, you know, they just want to live in peace. We would have to find a happy medium here. It is zone residential, correct?
Currently.
R three.
Currently, yes, ma'am.
And he's wanting to do commercial light. Um, you know, people are getting fed up. They're willing to leave their own home, they're being run out. And your county commissioners, it looks like to me, if this property doesn't have a perk test on it, why is this a big issue? It should be, I'm sorry, this, we don't need to rezone it. Um, I, and I, I don't have anything against Mr. Hedrick. Perhaps he could do this somewhere else. They have the right to live in peace. They've worked all their life. And quite frankly, I'm looking at all of us, we're all pretty old and I haven't lost all my hair yet. But let's find a happy medium. Really, I, I'm just, she could be your mother. She just is telling you she's ready to move. Why should she have to move to have peace? Why? There's over two million people that have left society and moved out to homestead with nothing. They're getting tired. They just want to live their life out with happiness and peace. Let's see if we can't find a happy medium on that. I'm not for or against, but I, I'm pretty well, let's let them have their peace, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? In favor or in opposition? Last call. Hear none, I'm gonna close the, uh, public hearing. Any questions, uh?
I am.
Yes, sir.
Could, could you, uh, show me what the route is from, uh, the proposed site to the young ladies out there?
The, the young lady?
Yeah.
The...
The eighty-five year old.
She, they, that, she lives down here at the dead end. So they would actually leave the property and, and go away from her house, either out East Park or down Robert Everhart.
Okay. And that's a stain, uh, state maintained?
Yes, sir. It's a state maintained road.
But she's gotta go past there to get out, right?
Yes, she, to, to leave her house and go anywhere, she has to come out and come past that property, either straight. Both of these, uh, exit out on the twenty-nine seventy.
Is there any school traffic on that road?
I, I don't, I, I think we'd have to ask the, the folks that live out there. I don't know if there are any school-aged children.
There's a school bus that goes up the road sometimes, I've seen it. I'm not...
I'm not at the window all the time, but I have seen a school bus go up and down here.
Where is that? Couldn't hear.
She, she said that there was a school bus that she's seen at times. Is that consistent every day?
I don't look out the window every day, I'm not in that part of the house.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
The school bus stops right where Robert Everhart Road joins. East Park Avenue. Because I've seen the children get on the bus and off the bus right there.
That's right here.
Right there?
Yeah.
Lee, when you, when you went down there today, where did you go? Could you show us?
I rode down here, I rode all the way to the end of the road. I came back, I rode out here to see what that road looked like out to, uh, twenty-nine seventy.
When you rode through there, what was the condition of the road regarding mud and debris?
Uh, I, I didn't notice any excess mud today. Uh, it, it might have been a little bit dusty, but I didn't notice any caked-on mud when I was out there.
That gra, is that gravel? You said gravel and tar?
Uh, the road looked like it was tar and gravel. It's, I don't think it's an asphalt road, but it looks like it's tar and gravel.
And I might not hold up real well with it.
Well, I, and, and I hear, I hear what the, uh, the folks, and they've got some valid concerns. What I would propose, if the board will, will, uh, you know, indulge me, is ask Mr. Hedrick if he'd be willing to get an NC DOT driveway permit. That would address a couple of different things. They'll, they'll look at the road to see if it's capable of handling the traffic he's proposing to put on it. They also may ask him to pave the first fifty feet of the road, which would keep potential mud off of the facility and on his property. Um, I, but this is a conditional zoning request, so that can, he would have to agree to that. The second concern I heard was about perk test. Mr. Hedrick's going to have to go through the permitting process. That process involves, environmental health will be involved with that. If he can't, whatever the regulations are for his size facility, that'll have to be addressed through the environmental health department. So, he will have to go through that process in order to pull all applicable permits for his proposed building that he's trying to get electricity on. So, there, there are stages or, or steps in place to take a look at the, the valid concerns that these folks have raised.
If, uh, if he does, if he doesn't, uh, build that building, he can continue doing what he's doing, can't he?
Technically, this application would correct what he's doing right. Technically, right now, he's a violation of zoning regulations.
Okay, even, so, he, he didn't, he didn't follow, follow under the grandfather clause or anything like that. He's subbed it to the zoning that's perched presently on that property, right?
The, the residential zoning that's on there right now does not allow the activity that's taking place. This application is an attempt to, to correct that.
Okay, okay, I thought it was if you had to put a building over there, but that's.
Do you have, do you have something you want to say?
Yes, I could. Um, I'm in the process with a soil scientist right now. Um, you guys hadn't received it, but on the site five, between five and S, there's a large amount of soil that's very good for percale, for, for septic. And we're only talking about a few people. Most of the employees just, a few of the employees come there, most of them just go to job sites, just a handful of people there, maybe twelve or thirteen, not the most. So, really don't need a lot of septic area, um, you know, so really not looking for a lot. So, I don't need a lot of septic area. But it sounds like, and I, I appreciate your concerns and I understand everybody's got a voice and, and I'm, I'm glad you're here to speak it. It seems like, I do know the road has always been bad before I got there. It's never been in great shape.
It's a dirt road at one time.
Dirt road at one time. So, it sounds like we're dealing with a road issue concern that the state's maintaining. Um, maybe would help these folks. There is no lines on the road. The road is not too narrow, but it's not twenty-six foot wide or so for a big low boy or a dump truck to pass or come in on. So, I understand their concerns, but it looks like to me that a lot of the complaints I heard, and I've been out there for several years and my name's on a property. No one's ever contacted me to complain. I've never heard, I've heard maybe this gentleman here mentioned something one time, maybe another meeting years ago. But, um, you know, willing to do about whatever I can do to, to make the folks happy. I mean, I, the place is not really an house. So, I mean, we can ride around the community if we want to and start pointing out things to other folks if you like. I would say this is a business, um, looking to try to keep it nice and neat. Um, we are right here close, within twelve, thirteen hundred foot from an industrial corridor that's running right into town. I think it's a needed facility. And I've been here in the county for a long time. I'm a developer as well and I have the opportunity to do something else with the property if I chose to. I think this is a, what I, what I want to do with it.
Would you be willing to obtain a NC DOT driveway permit for this, this property?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And, and improvements on the road, I don't feel like to, to rebuild the road is, it should be on me. If the state maintains, I pay quite a bit of taxes. I feel like the state should be able to fix the road up to make these folks happy. So, but I will do what I need to do in interest and I'm not going to say that if, if you go in and out of there, when it's raining, you can bring out debris on the road and, and we're, should be responsible for cleaning that up and I'll take a better look at that. But for the most part, from the start of Robert Everhart Road all the way down to where, I'm sorry, your name, where she lives, it's not a lot of difference in the road all the way through there. If you go out by Lot sixty-eight there, going toward the college, that road isn't bad.
Is that a crossover? When you get down to the end of that road, is that a crossover?
You can go, you can go either way.
Wouldn't you bypass most of that if you went out that way?
Yes, you would.
That would be, Lee, that, you wouldn't have to be, what you, what you're witnessing here.
Right, right. And I understand the voice that folks don't want other folks in and out of here and people, man, I own the property, I have my right as well. You know, I'm just looking to, to, um, get this zoned.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Kestner?
Answering my questions right there.
Yep, I bet you know.
No comments.
Okay. Uh, no, Fay's got one and I've got one for Lee.
Yes, sir.
I live on one of those roads, asphalt and tar.
Hmm?
And there's so much, many patches on there that you might as well have it paved. And I called private, uh, Pat Ivy and asked him about it and he said, well, he said, it's going to be paved, but you won't be here. So, it's going to be, it's going to be down there a bit.
I see.
But they come in and they patch it, they patch it and it, it comes raining in there and it goes right back in the hole.
I, I live on one myself. Ralph Miller Road is, is tar and gravel and it's got potholes and patches everywhere.
But if you call, then they'll tell you when they're going to repaint it. It's on the plan.
Yeah.
Nineteen thirty-three. Twenty thirty-three.
My question is, Lee?
Say, I think I'm there.
Yes, sir.
And I hadn't heard it brought up yet, but show me any light industrial that's around this property.
Um, there's not any touching the property. This track right here is the old, uh, City of Lexington landfill. This is a, um, North Carolina Railroad. This is an economic development corridor. There's L I here and here, there, but this is all highway commercial right through here. So, they're about eight hundred feet from this plan-identified economic development corridor. The question is, since our plan's not a parcel-specific plan, is it under the influence of that, given the type of facility it is? It takes some room, outdoor storage, do, do you want that right on the road or do you want it kind of off the beaten path a little bit secluded? And this property, the topography of this property lends itself to that. Because the road is the high spot and there's a creek that comes down through here like this. There's a fence up right here and, and yes, you can see his facility. Um, part of, um, part of the, uh, application would be screening along there so that you couldn't see anything. So, really, this is, this is kind of a lay-down yard. His employ, some of his employees come there and they go to job sites, others just go to job sites. He keeps his equipment there. So, this is really a traffic issue that, and I understand why these folks have brought this to, to our attention.
Kind of lends it to itself if, if it's not in a residential neighborhood, you know? And like I say, me and Mr. Hedrick, we do the same kind of work and I, I get what you're trying to do over there, Lanny, I do. Again, I got a little bit of an issue with it being in a residential neighborhood. Um, and, and I guess if you'd got it zoned originally when you started, these people would have had a chance to, to have said something and, and, and had their say then. But, you know, I guess now, we're trying to fix a wrong, you know? Um, and it's kind of back when I was in the trash business, somebody, you know, I get it. If I tried to open a trash business up across from somebody's house, they wouldn't want it, you know? And I get that part, I wouldn't want to live beside one either, you know? So, so I feel for these people, okay? Uh, now, what the rest of the board feels about it, I don't know, but I, I, I can hear them. Dump trucks coming in and out, um, most every day. Uh, it ain't something they, they had when they bought their property or especially this lady at the end that said, I tried to buy the land next to her. But, um, maybe I'd have another way out if I buy that land, I hope. But, um, but anyhow, that's just my thought process, Lanny, nothing, uh, other than I'm not so sure that I can support this because it's light industry in a residential, uh, neighborhood. So, any other questions?
I've got one for Lee.
Okay.
Lee, based on the information that y'all received, why did the planning board feel they could approve this?
Well, there was no opposition at the planning board meeting. No one, no one came to the meeting.
Okay.
Um, and, um, they, they felt that this was probably a good location for this type of facility.
Well, I'm familiar with the property.
Yeah.
It's not like it's in a residential.
It's, it's.
It drops off and goes down to the bottom. Am I correct on that?
It's low area back there.
Yeah, it goes all the way down to the bottom right there. And, you know, if Lanny would just change his route and go out the other way, I think that would alleviate these people's problem, what they're concerned about.
I, I don't know which way you could go out without being through residential though, do you?
Well, if you go out, out, East Park, know where that is?
East, East Park Avenue.
Yeah.
This would turn and run parallel and then it.
For number sixty-eight is if he'd limit his entrance and exit there and not go around that curve on Robert Everhart over to the left, it would not even come down.
Get over Old Motel, I think it's right there, close to Old Motel.
Yeah.
And, and I thought I, could I say one more thing?
Yeah, sure, sure.
I, you know, I lived on, um, Greensboro Street Extension and I rode the school bus when I was a little girl. And our school bus went up in there, but not on, they went up this side and down the other side or up this side and down the other way. But most of the people live on that straight road way, way up there.
Here?
That's where, when I was growing up, that's where most of the people lived. There was almost nothing over, over in this area, so, um, I'm not surprised of where it is.
I mean, like I say, it's lowland, I get it for sure.
The Lexington Police Academy's either here or right here, so they're, they've got their training facility there. The only property that has any improvements on it at all is this property here. The rest of these are all vacant. I think the planning board took that into account as well. Uh, there is a, a residence here on this property.
Is that flood, flood plain down in there?
Um, the, the flood plain map, I don't, I don't think it showed anything. Um, you, the, at the planning board meeting, Mr. Hedrick talked about potentially, if, if successful, create maybe like a little rail spur or something down here to utilize the North Carolina Railway, which, which would be a piece of infrastructure for industrial development.
Like I say, there was no opposition at the, uh?
That's, that is accurate, yes, sir.
And like I say, does the property suit it? Sure it does.
Mm-hmm.
The residential side of it, it don't. Um, and again, if I was these folks here, I'd be probably saying the same thing, so. And I get it, we can ask them to go out down into the road, but we can't make them do that.
Do it.
So, um.
We're knowing, Lanny, like you say. I would call it a gentleman's agreement. Would Jack Lanny, would you agree to go out that way?
Absolutely.
To, to, so these people don't have that problem? I would, I would, I think that would quieten everybody.
Same thing for seven, eight years.
Yeah.
After what I'm doing, nothing, I'm going to put a building up there to.
Yeah.
Get it to dry.
I don't think that's too much of an inconvenience to go out that other way though, do you? I mean, you still go north and south, eighty-five.
I think the best needs to be addressed from the D F P.
I, I agree with you on that. I think these people would like that too.
But like I say, these folks here in their defense now, they may have thought this property was already zoned. Maybe they didn't know, not everybody knows zoning and what's approved and what's not approved. So, now it's come to their attention for zoning and they're here speaking their piece, so.
I don't blame them.
Yep, I don't either.
We received a letter for this, otherwise we would have not known. We did not know this about that first meeting you're talking about. Did you get one? No, she didn't. We haven't.
Uh, that, that's because her property don't adjoin the property.
Yeah, she's, she's not an adjoining property owner.
Just adjoining property owners get a letter, so.
What it is, if you send him down the other way, East Park, down that way, because you can go all the way around to the highway either way. But if you send him down that way, then there is residential there too and those people are going to be in that.
Down the ru, down the side street though, is it? It's down the side street? Most of the residential down the side street.
Yeah, there's also churches out there.
There, there's some residential down through here as well, because this, this doesn't actually.
Kind of be coming by your place than that, then. Well, he's, he's, he can't airlift out of there. He's got to go one way or the other. If he does, yeah.
Is your main concern the mud? The road, the mud?
Mud, dirt, dust.
Yeah.
My life.
Off, off the road? Off the road?
The noise of the trucks, the trucks going.
Yes.
Blame the tailgate, they got vibrators on the crutches that echo down through there. It's sometimes they'll rattle the windows.
There's a lot of.
They'll rattle our windows.
Is there anything, Lanny, we could do to limit the mud, maybe?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
And even though the road has been rough for a while, it got newer and it's, I mean, the trucks are. And the trucks are every now and then, the trucks are pretty constant on some days. I mean, they're up and down, up and down all day long. They're bringing in stuff, they're taking their trucks out and wanting it more. It's just constant.
Okay, any other questions? All right, staff recommendation?
Thank you, sir. Um, we, we've read into the record, the, uh, the conditions submitted. An additional condition now would be that he must procure an NC DOT driveway permit that would address the road. If there's a weight limit on the road, they may not give him a, a driveway permit. It'll also probably require him to concrete or pave the first fifty feet of his driveway so that that, that's designed to, uh, keep the dirt and stuff on his property. Um, the subject property is isolated, but is in close proximity to Highway twenty-nine seventy. The entrance to the applicant's property is only a thousand feet off of the US twenty-nine seventy corridor. The US twenty-nine seventy corridor is identified as an economic development corridor by the Davison County Land Development Plan. Highway commercial zoning is only eight hundred feet to the north of the applicant's entrance. And limited industrial zoning is located nine hundred and sixty feet to the north and is better known as the old toy chest building. To access the applicant's property, you do have to travel past several residences on East Park Avenue or Robert Everhart Road. East Park Avenue is a dead-end road, turbinating, and I apologize for this, at the North Carolina Railroad. I, I know it does not go down that far now. Um, right-of-way. Properties, the easement does go to the right-of-way, the road does not. Properties to the north, east and west are all vacant and wooded and show no building values on, on any of those tracks. The only adjoining property that shows a building value is to the southwest of the request on the Har, Harz Rental LLC property labeled as Lot Six on your maps. Uh, staff compliments the applicant in his preparation of the application, recognizing potential conflict with the surrounding uses. This type of activity does require large acreage and it is beneficial if the acreage is somewhat isolated. Staff recognizes this property is currently not in compliance with our local zoning regulations. However, the rezoning process is a means of correction if the proper loca, if in the proper location. Staff is going to offer support for the request citing close proximity and easy access to the US twenty-nine seventy corridor. The fact that this property is isolated locally from other uses in the area is a benefit in staff's opinion. Staff is comfortable with the conditions proposed in the application and feel they offer protection to the few adjoining property owners in the area. The topography of this location seems to not offer a high probability of large-scale subdivision in the area, which in staff's opinion is a benefit to the applicant. Staff will offer several policies that support the applicant's request. Policy one-one-one-two, one-three-one-five-one-seven, one-eight-four-one, four-two, four-four, and seven-four, all in support of the applicant's request. Davison County is undergoing a tremendous amount of growth pressure in every sector of the economy. Industrial, commercial, and residential growth are all taking place at alarming rates. This factor be, could be considered change for change of conditions in the area generally, which would make this rezoning compliant with Article Seven Administration of the Davison County Zoning Ordinance. which would make this rezoning compliant with Article Seven Administration of the Davidson County Zoning Ordinance. Due to the above-stated rationale, staff will recommend approval of the request.
Y'all heard staff recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Where, where would the driveway be that you're talking about?
The driveway is located right there. Um, I mean-
Well, the driveway would be wherever N C D O T gave him the driveway.
They, they will, yeah, the N C D O T will dictate driveway location. He's gonna request right here where this current driveway is. It's right, right there. And it does look like there's pretty good sight distance both way. I'm not an N C D O, D O T employee, but that's one of the main factors that they look at is, is their sight distance. Can you see pulling in and pulling out?
Okay, I'm right.
Good question. Any other questions? Ma'am, can I get a motion in favor or opposition?
Motion to approve the application.
Do I have a motion? Do we have a second?
Third.
All right, all in favor?
Ah.
Opposition, uh, how many opposed? Two? Yep. All right, folks, that motion passed, uh, five to two, okay? Sorry about that.
Thank you for working with him, Lanny. Thank you.
Y'all did understand, right, ma'am? Y'all did understand? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, just wanted to make sure. All right, uh, item number B, uh-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next request is by Robert and Melanie Gates to rezon property in Midway Township, tax map one, Lot twenty-four, containing two-point-one-five acres more or less. Said property is located on the west side of Old Lexington Road, approximately seven-tenths of a mile north of the Jones Road intersection, also known as seventy-one oh-six Old Lexington Road. Rezoning is requested to change from that of R A three, Rural Agricultural District and L I Limited Industrial District to that of R A three, Rural Agricultural District and L I Limited Industrial District. That can be a little bit confusing to unpack, but, but what happened is Mr. Gates, I think in twenty-twelve, successfully rezoned a portion of his property. Here, the, the property highlighted in blue is, uh, the applicant's property. There is a piece that's zoned L I right here in this southeast corner of Lot twenty-four. This is Old Lexington Road. This runs down to Gumtree Road. This, this goes on into Winston. Um, this is, uh, Andy Willard's old junkyard that's up there on, it's a large junkyard. It's still, uh, in business. Automobile salvage, you get used parts there. Um, Mr. Gates operates a, a tree business and successfully rezoned several years ago. Um, he's got some issues with his homeowner's insurance because the zoning's in the wrong place. So he had Mr. Christian Jones survey out two separate lots so that he could fix his insurance and now we're matching the zoning line to the survey line. Um, this is Mr. Jones's survey line. It would, there would be a line here, here, there. And if successful, this whole property here would become L I, where only a portion of it is now. This whole property would become R A three. So what are we, what are we trying to do? We're trying to change the existing L I is this. So we're trying to take this from L I and move it to R A three and we're trying to take this from R A three and move it to L I. So, once the public hearing's open, Mr.-
All right, I'll open the public hearing and, uh, Mr. and Ms. Gates, either one, wanna come up and give us a little briefing?
Uh, did I have to talk?
You don't have to. You surely don't, unless the board members got questions. All right. I don't blame you. I, I'm ready to wait sometime, too. Anybody got any questions?
I do. What kind of business is going there?
There's already a tree trimming business.
Okay.
Is it landscaping as well or just tree trimming?
Only, it's, uh, only tree service.
You're next door to the junkyard, right?
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna have any input or anything to do with the junkyard at all?
No, I've been next to them since like, uh, oh-eight, maybe.
Okay, you're not gonna be parking any junk cars on your property there?
No, no, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
This is a, this is a Duke Power right-of-way down through. You can see the, the, the towers right through there.
Okay, so it's got clear vacant lot, lot right next to it.
Yes, sir. You'd be, you'd be rezoning from R A three to L I, one-point-one-nine acres, and you'd be rezoning from L I to R A three, point-two-three acres. That gets his house out of the industrial, his homeowner's happy, and we're just rearranging some districts.
Gotcha.
Okay, all right, anybody, uh, wishing to speak in favor or in opposition? All right, here none. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Mr. Crook, um-
S- staff is gonna support the request. Um, this makes a good buffer and transition to the R A properties further north. He is contiguous to L I to the south and, um, there are several policy statements, one-one, one-five, one-seven, one-eight, four-one, four-two, four-three, four-four, four-five, and seven-four, that all support the request. We'd recommend approval and ask you to adopt a statement of consistency.
All right, I have a motion to-
The chairman, I make a motion to approve the rezoning request and adopt the rezoning.
All right, I have a motion to approve. Second, any other discussion? Here none. Do I have a motion to approve?
Ah, I vote.
Any opposed? Um, yeah, vote, all right. I'm reading on the C now, all right? So that motion passes, yeah?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, um-
Thank you.
Thank you, yep.
All right, the last public hearing we have tonight is request by the Davidson County Board of Commissioners to amend the Davidson County's zoning ordinance. Set amendments man-klued but not be limited to the following articles and sections. An amendment changing the land density for certain types of multifamily dwellings in Article Three, Table of Permitted Uses, Article Six, Development Standards, an amendment for increasing the size of residential solar panels in Article Six, Development Standards, and an amendment to the decibel level for an indoor firing range in Article Five, Special Uses. So this one application will contain actually three different, uh, text amendments in it. And the first one that we have up is the size of the, uh, apartments for development in just one single district. Currently, in the R M one district, duplexes, I'll, I'll start like this. Duplexes have been built out of the Residential Building Code for several years. Uh, several bills passed, both House Bill and Senate, moving triplexes and quadplexes into the residential code. Um, having done that, we're now starting to receive requests for triplexes and quadplexes. Well, we have a special development standard just for duplexes, just two apartment units, that says they can be on forty thousand square feet, twenty thousand square foot per each dwelling. That's been in place since about twenty fifteen. The Homeowners Association came through and did that. Um, and it was successful. That, um, that's worked well. We had input from the Health Department at that time. Twenty thousand square foot, uh, was ample enough size for them to, to put a septic tank in. And I would like to preface anything that, that happens here tonight, whether this is successful or not. If the Health Department needs more space, this doesn't prohibit them from requiring more space. If they need more than twenty thousand per dwelling unit to get a system in, their rules will take precedent and the lots will have to be bigger. So I, I wanna say that, but it's worked well for us over the last, you know, eleven years, having twenty thousand per unit. The, the triplexes and quadplexes are considered apartments under our, our, uh, ordinance. They each require currently thirty thousand square foot of ground per unit. So a quadplex would have to have thirty thousand three times, I'm sorry, four times in a quadplex. A triplex would have to have thirty thousand three times. What this amendment would do would be to create a development standard that treats triplexes and quadplexes the way we currently ple- uh, treat duplexes and just require twenty thousand square foot of ground for each dwelling unit in the building. So, uh, a, a, a triplex would go from sixty, or ninety thousand square foot of ground down to, uh, sixty thousand square foot, twenty, twenty-three times, because there's three dwelling units in them. Am I, am I clear, um?
Unless the Health Department says otherwise.
Unless the Health Department says you need more ground. And, and I, I wanna also remark that this is only in one single zoning district that we have, our medium-density district. This does not count in all the R As, all the R Ss, not even in our R M two, our high-density. That's subject to sewer and higher densities. So the medium-density would be twenty thousand per dwelling in an apartment building only, if this is successful, and I'm happy to try to entertain any questions.
Any questions? All right, here none. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak?
We probably would need, would we need like, you want, can we handle three different votes so that we know which way they vote on each, each point?
We do have the three votes at the end? That works. Do you want him to explain that or do before you open it?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Okay, the s- the second one, um, on the agenda tonight is a, um, we're looking at, let me get right to it. Um, that's the apartments. Well? All right, currently we, our ordinance, when people are installing residential solar panels, um, on their, on their houses, our ordinance limits them to a maximum of four hundred square foot, whether it's a ground-mounted residential system or whether it's a roof-mounted residential system. The proposed, and, and every single request that we get for a residential system is larger than four hu- four hundred square feet, so we're having to do variances for all of these requests. Um, if successful, we would erase the four hundred square foot maximum, um, solar requirement and we would add language through the Development Standard Section, which is Section Six, that says, on a roof-mounted system, you just can't go past your roof line. It has to be contained on your roof. Um, for a ground-mounted system, we would add, uh, which is also subject to the current four hundred, we would add language that states, um, a hundred and twenty-five percent of the electrical, uh, average electrical demand of a residence of, of similar square footage. So that means that, that whatever that size house, the average electrical demand is, you could put a hundred and twenty-five percent of the solar panels in there. And that number is being looked at because all of the applications that come through our office have an offset of what the, the power demand is being offset. There's a percentage in these applications. They're offsetting fifty percent. They're offsetting eighty percent. So they, they kinda know the demand for the house and they know what size the array is and what it's offsetting as far as the demand. So that would be the, uh, the, the request is that on a roof-mounted system, you have to keep it on your roof, whatever size it is. You know, a ground-mounted system, which we don't hardly ever see any of those, um, you'd have to be maximum a hundred and twenty-five percent of the average electrical requirement of a house of similar square footage.
All right, so the third one?
The last one, we're talking about the, uh, the noise level. This is in the Special Use Section for indoor firing range. Our ordinance currently requires that if you're gonna build an indoor firing range, you have to, you have to construct the building to a level of sound absorption that you're only hearing forty decibels at the property line, wherever that's at. Um, this actually came to my attention, the Davidson County, Davidson-Davy Community College is, is looking at constructing one of these facilities for their training program. And their consultant, along with some representatives from the college, reached out and we had a phone conversation and they, they, uh, brought it to my attention that that's an exceptionally strict sound level. Um, and that most of the, the places and jurisdictions that they do business in, it's, it's not that restrictive. So we started looking to, to try to verify that. And, and sure enough, forty, forty's almost unheard of, forty decibels at the property line. Um, what we looked and found is that most jurisdictions would say fifty-five decibels at night at the property line and sixty decibels during the day, um, which is what we're proposing in this amendment. And to give you some idea what those decibel levels are, are equivalent to, I included a little chart in your packet, but we've got, um, we've got the same thing here. Forty decibels is, is average room noise. That's, you know, um, fifty decibels is, is moderate rainfall, sixty's a normal conversation. So you could, you can see a normal conversation at the property lines, having to keep it quieter than that. Uh, seventy is, is common office noise, eighty's a vacuum cleaner or a lawnmower. So that's, that table's designed to give you guys an idea of kind of what levels we're talking about in, in comparable noises. So that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, public hearing open. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Come right up, please.
Good evening. My name is Ronald Campbell. Uh, I brought something very similar to what you see on the board from the National Rifle Association manual. I'm interested in indoor firing range, uh, before I made the knowledge of the community college. It has a lot of advantages because currently our residents have to drive to Pro Shot's in Western Salem, which is over thirty miles, or Calipers, which is thirty-eight miles, or have to go to Charlotte. The reason being is a great opportunity for us to educate our community, educate our young people regarding shooting. It's very good outdoor sport. However, training facilities are needed to be able to teach people on an indoor level. Not long ago, I went to shoot at a friend's outdoor range. Uh, it was not properly, uh, set up. I did not shoot. I left. Uh, I don't think alcohol or anything else should be involved, uh, when it comes to guns and ammunition. In a controlled environment, these things are very good and very helpful to our community. Uh, in reading the ne- excuse me, in reading the National Resource Manual, there are a lot of advantages. I don't wanna go into that, but I am in favor of increasing. I like to see it higher. But again, these are very good steps in the right direction in order for us to, uh, have a community college do what they're doing and also for our community. Again, I'll probably coming back, uh, in the near future, talking about this, uh, in greater detail, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
All right, anybody else wishing to speak in favor or opposition?
I just need to, um, get some clarity on the solar panels.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, nothing in there would prohibit, 'cause I'm a real estate agent, so we're, we're starting to see a lot of the solar.
Yes, ma'am.
Nothing in this would stop anybody from unhooking from the grid. Is that, is that anything that would be in that? 'Cause you're saying that per square footage, right, of the roof, that's how many panels they would need. Is that for both sides or one side?
Well, that, that would be variable depending on the aspect of the house, the sun angle, trees, that kinda thing. Uh, no, there, there would be no language. All, all this is doing is, 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 uh, limiting the number of solar panels to the roof structure itself for roof-mounted, which is ninety-nine percent of what we see.
Right, but they don't-
And would, but whether they're on-grid or off-grid, that's, that's up to the individual.
Okay, so there's nothing in there for them that says, well, you still have to hook up to Duke Energy. You know what I mean?
Absolutely, absolutely not.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak in favor or opposition? All right, see you none. Um, what do you need? A motion, three motions?
Prefer a motion on each, uh, each item on the, the agenda, which, the, uh, not the agenda, but the application. The first being twenty thousand square foot per dwelling unit for triplexes and quadplexes.
All right, do I have a motion?
A move.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Here none? All in favor?
Ah, aye.
Any opposed? All right, that one carries.
The, the second item being the, uh, the relaxation of the size limits on solar panels, uh, to just keep them on the roof or a hundred and twenty-five percent of the average daily electrical demand of a, of a residence if it's ground-mounted.
Make a motion we approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second, all in fa- any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And lastly, relax the decibel level in the special use permit for an indoor firing range to fifty-five decibels in the daytime, or nighttime, and sixty decibels during the day.
We do it.
Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? All right, that carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Sure.
Good job, Lee.
All right, item number eight, item for consent. Any- All right, item number eight, item for consent, anybody wishing to pull anything up to consent? Here none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, here we come to the much, uh, awaited nine A approval of the sports complex. Mr. Smith, I don't-
I'd like to make a motion. That we change this until such time as we can get, um, public hearing or some manner that we let the people that are-
All right. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
So four, three?
Two?
I said aye.
Okay, yeah, so we're gonna hear the discussion, yes.
Oh, so three, four, okay.
Yeah, am I right?
Yep. All right, so Mr. Smith, if you would like to, uh, lead some of these answers off, those people have been sitting here all night, so I think they need some answers.
Sure. Let me get Thomas to come up, I'll need him for some of the comp things, but I actually found some and I think one of them is, may have been the folks he were using. I sure can. So I just found in, um, uh, folks have put out a, a periodical called Community Playmaker in two thousand and twenty-three, Rocky Mount, which everybody knows Rocky Mount, North Carolina, has an event center that generates fifteen million dollars of economic impact for a hundred and sixty-five thousand square foot facility. This was someone's question earlier about comps, and I know you've got some others from South Carolina. They generate seventy-seven thousand people a year, uh, coming through the facility and they only have a fifty-three thousand people live in the, living in the, uh, living in Rocky Mount. They spent forty-one million dollars on the facility, part of it being debt related and part of it being a grant. And they did raise taxes slightly, I guess, they didn't say where to fund it for operating or to build it. Rocky Top Sports World in Gatlinburg, Tennessee, which Gatlinburg, I guess, has a non-seasonal population of just, just under thirty-six hundred people, spent fifty-six million dollars in two thousand and twenty-two on a facility that they have there that generates twelve million visitors a year and it's a joint venture between the city of Gatlinburg and the county and generates forty-six million dollars of economic impact. So I found those two, and I know Rocky Mount was one that you guys had looked at, but you had some others from South Carolina. Um, so I'll let him do that and just say, but let me, I do have the questions wrote down, they're not in any particular order, they were in as the folks came up and spoke. Youth tourism, youth sports tourism in two thousand and fifteen was valued spending at nine and a half million dollars, in two thousand and twenty-one it was forty million dollars. The one that I noticed that I don't have a, a great answer for is the notification piece. There, there is no law here that we had to notify anyone of the meeting, you know, we did, I mean, I was on TV twice about this and we've talked about this, I think, in three or four public meetings. So I, we don't send notices out, you know, there's no zoning change or anything like that. So that's the one that I don't have the greatest answer for. The rest of them I got, got down pretty pat. We, we don't have to put this out for a vote for citizens because we're not borrowing money for this. We're paying for this with cash, and I'll explain where the cash is coming from in just a minute. So if we were borrowing money or gonna do a bond or something of that nature, that would be probably, even if we were gonna put out a bond, there's two types, two types of bonds. There's bonds where we can ask the citizens to pledge the tax rate as the backing for the funding for that, that would be voter approved. There's bonds that we can sell, the gentleman on the corner mentioned capacity of debt falling off. We don't run deficit spending like the federal government, so we pay a mortgage. The federal government's not paying their mortgage, that's why they're running a deficit. And the deficit adds to the debt. And I know you guys have seen the forty-one trillion or whatever they show on the news. So that's how you go in the hole, in North Carolina, we're not allowed to do that. So we have to have a balanced budget and we have to make sure part of that budget is dedicated to paying our debts every year. So there is no deficit spending, I don't, I don't remember how that got brought up, but that doesn't, that's not, that's against the law in North Carolina. So where did the source of the funds come from? During the COVID era, and those of you that probably saw me on the news, I mentioned that, COVID front money. I did that for a reason because two pots of money came to us during what I call the COVID era. And always, when I go on TV, I always want to make sure, my mama can understand me in Thomasville, then everybody has got it. I did not want to go through with a news spot on explaining the difference between COVID rules of COVID money and what they refer to, and you, you all may have remembered this, A R A P money, the American Rescue Plan Act. Thirty-three million dollars came to this county from the American Rescue Plan Act from the federal government. There were rules for spending and one of the ways you could do it was you could take those funds and you could pay for your personnel costs in your general fund and then take your county dollars out and use it for anything you needed to use it for. It was called revenue replacement. And basically what they were doing was they were saying, county, we've locked you in hostage for two years, so we're gonna allow you to take all the money that you lost and if you want to quote unquote wash it and you use our money for personnel, you can take your money out and use it for what you need to. Some jurisdictions chose to spend those dollars on giving out raises or adding staff and et cetera. And some of those jurisdictions have now gotten caught with, and I'm not saying them all, but I see it a lot, where some of those jurisdictions have now gotten caught with, okay, we added things and now we don't have the grant money, so we have no way to pay for it. We chose not to do that. We chose to move it to the quote unquote rainy day fund. And set it there, not for this project initially, and I'll touch on that in just a second. And so along with that came a revow in two thousand and twenty-one that took place starting in our fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Every year in North Carolina, you have to do a property revaluation every eight years by law. You can do it sooner, but you have to do it within every eight years. We've always been on an eight-year cycle and we've always been at fifty-four cent tax rate. The last review we done when I got here ten years ago was basically the property values didn't grow. It was pretty much flat, what we call flat, zero. So we didn't adjust the property tax rate because there was no T, no reason to. And the theory behind that is if your property values grow, you're allowed to lower the rate by the same proportion and you generate the same amount of money and your bill doesn't change. Does that make sense? All right, so the legislative piece of that act comes here with this board, it's setting the tax rate. They have no control over your value. So your value will ascend based on markets and we will assess it and then we bring the assessments and they set the rate. Now, the one we're going, the one we did in two thousand and twenty-one, housing prices were starting to go up. And we decided then, we probably need to get ahead of this and go ahead. We were already getting pressure from the state of North Carolina saying, you need to do a property revaluation, you need to do a property revaluation. So we decided to go ahead and do it sooner, do it on a six-year cycle. We did it, but property values kept ascending. So with fifteen percent growth in property values at that time, it's gonna generate more funds for the county. We did not change the rate down, we decided we had these big major projects, the jail being one, general renovations and some additional school renovations, and I'll talk about those too in just a second, and some sewer needs. So we said, all right, we're gonna be able to put these funds to those and we're not gonna have to raise taxes to do it. The houses kept going. As you guys know, you see the news every night. So now we're in a situation where we gotta do it again next year because now we're, we've been told by the state of North Carolina, your sales ratio is too low, you have to do a revow because you can't, you can't do this. That may be a different revow that's coming up in two thousand and twenty-seven. It may be one where this board, and I'm not gonna put words in anybody's mouth here tonight because we're a long ways off from that. We'll be talking about this a year from now tonight. But this board will have to grapple with, what do they do with the tax rate? Because I don't, I'm not sure, you know, John Q. Sis, and I'm a taxpayer as well, you know, we're gonna allow all that amount of growth with no issues. So that's, that's another way that funds got put away in this rainy day account. Everybody with me? The property revow from before and the coupling with the A R A P dollars. So what do you want to spend it on? Well, this board's seen a list of projects at least half a dozen times over the last year that can be used for a variety of things. We did have Thomasville Sewer Project, that we got some funds from the state of North Carolina, but we've also helped out with that to expand sewer down sixty-four, turn left and head to Thomasville. What will it do? It will allow this basin and corridor over here to grow. So sixty-four's never been able to grow because it doesn't have sewer. Now there's, now there's ways to handle that. There was another project we wanted to do where we wanted to, everybody, I don't know if any of you all know, we have a, we have an industrial park at the county on the west side of the county over here, it's called the I- Eighty-Five Corporate Center. It's where Egger is located, if you've all heard of that. Okay, so there's other lots to be sold in that corporate center and our thoughts were, there are other land around there that can be developed. So we had funds come in from where I just described earlier that we said, you know what, we can work out a deal with city of Salisbury and we can go across the river and expand sewer that way. So we're not beholden to just one, we don't want to own a treatment plant, does that make sense? We just want to be able to lay lines, turn that infrastructure over to somebody to run, but we've got capacity to deal with, that's how you grow. You can't grow without sewer. Politically, there's some issues there that we need to deal with, there's some landowners in the way that don't want to sell property. There's a lot of obstacles. That project could be upwards of fifty million dollars. So what we decided to do was take those funds and say, you know what, or this board has decided it, I don't know, two or three meetings ago, we'll take those funds and we'll be able to use them for this project. Now that's a choice they can make. Because again, these, these funds are free and clear, they have no strings on them, quote unquote. Their arse funds can be set aside, we already have them on our plan, and again, it's a plan that I just talked to you guys last Thursday about, that I'd like to see us, this is my personal opinion, divvy up for school projects. And what I'd like to do is get this board with a facilities committee to come this summer, work with the school systems, work with the college. It will not be enough money to do everything that they need on their list, but it will be a good starting point with, as the gentleman spoke on the end over there, when we get debt capacity, we already have a budget, pretend it's like a roller coaster with my hand. You're paying this much now. If we're gonna go up just a little bit for the jail and we already got that covered and then it drops off, just like your house mortgage, you get thirty years in, it's gonna be less, right? Eventually you pay it off and you get the deed from the bank and it's over with. We are gonna be going on a downslide. But we already live on a budget that's this tall. When it slides, the gap is the capacity. You can sell additional debt and you're living just like you're living today, no tax increase. That's legitimate numbers. Now, if you go beyond that debt bars, you're spending more than you are today. So there's another way that we can sell debt and we can help the schools and continue this, you know, game of going on doing that. You know, the school's capacity at this time, we got twenty-five thousand seats in this county for Davidson County Schools. We're only using seventeen thousand. In ten years, they're only projected to use nineteen thousand. That leaves a lot of seats. And what that basically means is everything from Lexington, or is being utilized and everything from Lexington South is not. That is a conversation the school board needs to have about possibly redistricting. You don't come to us for a new school. Now, there are particular schools in this district that have a hundred percent capacity, but the system has capacity. So think about it, you wouldn't go, want them to come, ask this board to build a new school and spend, a new, a new elementary school's liable to cost you sixty-five or seventy million dollars. So somebody would not want to come to say, hey, why don't you build a new elementary school when you know you've got, you're only using seventy percent of your capacity? So there's conversations that need to be had there. And those conversations can have, have with this board and with the school board as well, again, long as we go through, go through those. So that's where the money come from, that gets that one off the list, um, while we didn't do a vote. We have done EMS pay, someone brought that up about EMS and not, that is a state, that's actually a nationwide problem. Nobody wants to be, uh, in law enforcement anymore, nobody wants, as you know, nobody wants to be a fireman anymore, nobody wants to be a paramedic anymore. So we've all got in, actually, nobody wants to be in, the labor market is shrinking, not growing. And that's even bigger macroeconomic problem. In other words, we've not, we've not borne babies in this country in the last fifty years, so it's not, the cavalry's not coming. We've talked about this in this boardroom before. There's no group of people coming to say, I'll, I'll take the spot of everybody that's retiring, it just ain't there. So as a nation, as a world, if you read the, if you read articles about, uh, Japan, for example, or China just introduced a bill the other day and their, whatever you call it, their, their government agencies or their government parliament saying they're gonna start getting into the business of incentivizing people to have babies. Enough people to pay for everybody that's living. So that's gonna be a problem nationwide, but we did raise paramedic pay ten percent, uh, two years ago? Year and a half ago? Uh, we tried some other things to get people to ride trucks, we tried a pay-for-riding program, it worked for a little while, it got some part-timers to ride. Ultimately, we had to go and say, all right, we're gonna have to raise pay. Who did the county buy the property from, I mean, that's public record off the deeds, it was, it's the Franks family, uh, down off Highway Eight there. So I think I'm allowed to say that, because again, it's on the deed. Will the, will we raise taxes? No. I mean, definitely, as you just heard from my speech there, the construction part of this, no. The operating piece of it, so once it's built, you gotta operate it, right? So last week, we talked about this last Thursday, based on these sized facilities we're talking about, and Thomas can touch on the staffing, someone brought that up in a minute. Uh, you know, you gotta have a lot of part-time staff, so I don't know that you need, the, the four full times are kind of the heavy hitters of running it. You're gonna need a lot of part-time staff for, for ground maintenance, you're gonna have a lot of contract lifeguards, all those kinds of things. The estimates, and this is coming largely from our engineers right now, you know, if it's gonna take two million dollars to run the facility, I mean, uh, uh, one point six million dollars to run the facility, the expectation is it makes to two and largely from the pool area, as you saw. And so that's where you get the four hundred thousand dollar, uh, quote unquote over collection. That can be used for, someone mentioned about security. Well, there's your pot to go to, to buy additional security if you need to. Roads, inside the park handled by us, outside the park, probably gonna be conversations with DOT. Just as we've saw tonight with the zonings. Teacher raises, somebody brought that up, we did address that last Thursday as well. We didn't go, now the state, everybody has to remember in this room, these are state employees. So they get paid, their salary comes from the state, but there's supplements that we provide. And we had a conversation yes, uh, last Thursday about a possible adjustment to local supplements, but we're only a small piece. So always remember that when you see on the news about raises for, we don't pay their salary, quote unquote, we're responsible for a supplement piece. Someone else also mentioned, Thomas Marshburn's gonna work fifteen more years, so I got that on record. I wrote that down.
We're gonna hold him to it.
I thought it was five, but, uh, he's, somebody said fifteen, so I wrote it down. That's me in this book. And Mr. Chairman, I think that's all, um, of the issues I wrote down. So if I missed anything, let me know.
No, I think you got them all.
I think so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making motion that we approve the sports complex.
Oh, well, let me, let me prep, real quick, let me preface what you have before you. Sorry, I would have been helpful, I'm sorry, Commissioner Elliott. All you have before you is what we talked about last Thursday, a project ordinance, a capital project ordinance to take the sixty-five million from the funds we just discussed, which right now is eighty-one, move it into this project, so now it's earmarked. What I would envision is Thomas working with the facilities committee to come forward with the phasing piece that someone brought forward, this, you got the earth moving, you got, well, you got the design, first of all. It's gonna take months to get the design part down and then we're gonna, you're gonna be coming back to the facilities, because this board's gonna be involved in all those contracts over and over again. But there'll be those in addition to, after design, you'll be some earth moving. And you'll get, get probably started with that, I guess, if you're in warm weather. So you know as you're moving through the phases till you get to construction. So I just want, all tonight is set the budget, project ordinance with the, um, notion that Thomas is going to work with the facilities committee to bring forth those pieces. Because you know how we are, we're gonna probably build them as we go to get value engineering pieces on this.
All right, we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second? All right. Motion and a second, any other discussion?
Yes, we're not gonna make comments.
One brief comment, if I may. Just, um, just, just, I've got a lot of constituents. Last Thursday, I was full speed ahead of us, I still support the complex. My suggestion to briefly table the decision is not me being against the complex. So all my fellow commissioners know that, all my constituents know that. I just had a lot of legitimate concerns since last Thursday, well-founded and I thought it was just expedient for me as a representative of you folks just to say, hey, let's don't rush it, let's maybe take a couple of weeks, get your concerns answered and alleviated and then look at it again, that's all I'm saying. I do support this, but that's, I just want my fellow commissioners to know what I mean.
And I hope Casey answered most of the questions. I hope he answered all the questions, all that I heard anyhow. Matt, did you have something?
I do have a statement, if that's right.
Okay.
So I, I've been a proponent of this for, for a while and I've talked about the, the positives. Again, destination for family and kids, economic- Um, again, destination for family and kids, economic development, the revenue it'll be generated. We went with a conservative estimate. I think personally it'll go beyond that. Um, and then of course, how it can be used by the schools. Those are the positives. Now I did, similar to Commissioner, um, Chip Kessler here, I did take some time over the weekend. I looked back at some of our capital, capital improvement plans from last year, some of our budget things. And obviously I've been hearing from citizens as well. And I, I do have some concerns and so I'm gonna take kind of a balanced approach here. One of the concerns is, is there gonna be, um, sort of a dramatic disruption in the Southmont area to the folks who live down there? It's very rural. And is that something that they, you know, are gonna be accustomed to and would want? The other piece is, and we, we talk about this bringing economic development. And it bringing in the revenue, and again, totally agree, I think it will. I think it could also bring in more housing developments. And that is a concern I have. It's a concern in this county, I think, that a lot of citizens share. And I think a lot of the board members share it too. Are we prepared to have more neighborhoods shooting up in that area of the county? And then lastly, and this is kind of the biggest one for, for me right now, is, is it a good investment? I, I think it is. Again, I think it will bring revenue. But is it the best allocation of these funds at this point in time? And for me, it's not more critical than some of the, the projects that we have talked about. That have been requests in previous years, especially with the schools. I'm not talking about a new school, but renovations. And at one point, I know that the, the North Davidson Public Library was, was on the list. I don't think it's on our capital improvement plan any longer. So I, I think we just need to make sure we're prioritizing the things we, we need to prioritize in the county. Again, not saying it's not a, a great idea. I, I don't know if now's the time to be, to be moving forward with it. Those are my concerns.
Alright, Casey, do you wanna follow up with that any, or are you good?
No, I mean, I did wanna say about the capital plan piece, um, cause you had asked me that. And I think you had asked me, well, Mr. Chairman, it was in there last year at the phase one piece. And if you remember, I brought it to the board on a Thursday morning meeting and we kinda talked about that. And I think majority of you all said, no, let's, let's move on with doing it now. So I just wanna point that out. It's been in the plan, but at the phase one level, which was the ball fields piece. You start adding the, the aquatics piece or that in the quad, what we call the center. That's where the game changed. But, um, so it's, last year, we ended the fiscal year with it in like that. As we moved through the year, we've talked about it and that's how we got here, so.
What, if, can I have a question? Um, in the capital improvement plan, as it stood last year, I think we had agreed, it was about forty-five million for, for education.
Right.
This year, it's been cut to about thirty-three point five.
To make all the cash work, to get all them projects in, you can't have all of it. And that's, that gets back to your point about priorities, right?
Right, and that, and that's my concern here. Again, it's not that there's not value in it. Um, and all these, the commissioners, whether they agree or disagree, they're all coming from a good place. Um, it's just a concern that, that I have.
Well, then one more crept in, the lake dredging.
Right.
That crept in too as well, because, you know, we've all agreed to do the study. And we know there's gonna be somewhere along the line, a potential, I won't call it an ask, or something's gonna come. So there's, there's part of what siphoned off. It landed on the list when it was not there last year, so.
And, and we're gonna try to get federal money or some state assistant money with it.
Yeah, we had a conversation this morning with Senator Jarvis.
There's a lot of folks on the lake that are looking out there at sand dunes and, and are looking at us for help, you know? And again, those are tax-paying citizens that pay extra property tax to live on the lake.
I'm hoping the federal government will come through, as we told Senator Jarvis this morning. And that alleviates us from doing ten, uh, ten, Commissioner Mizell. But for right now, the plan is always needs to be the worst case scenario.
Right, and that, that's the thing also, we're hearing a lot of rumors from the federal government moving in. That, you know, the state could hold the education department here pretty soon, you know? We're hearing that. We're hearing about the federal education department being, uh, diverted by the president. And, uh, Congress and everybody moving down to the state. That is a real deal. That is not just rumors. And we don't know what that's gonna look like. It could totally change the game for Davidson County, state, North Carolina, all one hundred counties. So, uh, that's on our preview. We don't know how much money that's gonna be. We don't know where we're gonna be in that. So that's one thing that we're discussing as a board too.
Just to piggyback on what Casey said though, so the audience knows. The ten million we have for the lake dredging is also gotta be shared Rowan County. It's gotta match an equal amount, okay? So, or that, that's kinda the, the study that we've done.
The doll, anyway, right.
The long term, and the cost of that is thirty million. So we still don't have enough money there. So hopefully either we can get the federal government to pay all of it, uh, or some state and federal assistance. And again, maybe we get our money back. But th- those people's been sitting out there for a long time, paying high property tax, uh, with one foot of water in front of their house, so. Uh, Commissioner McClure?
Uh, I'm, like has already been said, um, I think there ought to have been more opportunities for the public, uh, to have input. Um, I coached basketball, JV, for fifteen years. I'm certainly not against, um, athletics. And I think that at some time, that that would be a good thing to do. I just didn't notice yesterday, I don't know whether y'all saw it or not, down Jones went down eight hundred and ninety points. The Standard and Poor went down lower than it has ever. And the NASDAQ went down further than it has ever been. And there's, there's talking of recession. Nobody knows at this point in time, what, um, President Trump's tariffs are going to. Everybody's guessing, but they don't know exactly what it is. And that's another thing that I had said before, but not, not against the flex. It's just, I think it, not now.
Okay, um, Karen, I'll leave with you next. I'm skipping over a few people here and there, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a few things, uh, and some of it may be repetitive from what you all said. But I wanted to underscore some things in the upcoming budget. If I'm supportive and grateful for the possibility of a significant increase in the supplement to be paid to our teachers. And we know that that's long overdue. I was a teacher, my, my daughter is a teacher and is in administration now. And she can, she can speak to it as well, but, um, I'm, I'm very, very hopeful about that. Now on the sports complex, I want you to know that I was not on board initially. That, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm conservative and I don't say yes and I don't say no, but I wait. I wait and think, but I've listened and, and, um, I wanted to see and, and learn from everyone. Including our, uh, Parks and Recreation Director especially. Uh, the possibility of, uh, this project on our lives in this county. I'm particularly, uh, excited about the possibility of schools having access to the facility. He's got a plan about the schools having an access and working out that access. Particularly in the area of a, the swimming facility. Uh, there's, on this complex plan is an indoor pool and an outdoor pool. I can see families playing at that outdoor pool. I can see students coming and practicing and having their meets at that indoor pool. Uh, I, I think it's fantastic. Uh, but the public, uh, I think is important. What, uh, this entire facility is going to offer for everybody. From the athletic side, which my girls, uh, were in athletics, but just for the fun of it, not for the competition. But they would have been able to, to have that as well. Families will be able to use the fields and enjoy the fields. And the general public being able to come to these swimming facilities. I spoke, uh, with some of my other colleagues about the Thomassville Aquatic Center. Has made such an impact on the city of Thomassville. And people that were never able to be a part of a pool community are, are there now. Uh, basket, I don't think you realize there's a, a building for basketball courts. Um, you know, that will enhance the skills that our students possess. We can, and I love that one of the gentlemen said, we can look at contract workers. Or we can consider using our own local teams for summer jobs or for after-school jobs. I think that's fantastic. Um, I've heard both sides, uh, we've heard that. Um, and I, and I think it will be a destination for not only our citizens, but outside our community. Um, some people have complained about the location. Let me say this, I, I taught homes, home, uh, schooled children, not taught, taught homebound students. When I first started teaching, I had to travel this entire county. And that's the reason to meet the needs of these students that were gonna be out of school for a short period of time. This, this huge county, west and east, north and south, I learned how big it is. And it would be difficult to find this large a piece of land that may have, like this guy said, um, tracks. For, for, for people to, uh, practice their, uh, cross-country, the cross-country. Also the possibility of this, um, RV park, uh, but certainly we would look at that in a positive way. But, um, I think we have a plan that's gonna support this plan. And the required facilities, as well as the needed facilities, uh, in the, in the years to come. The price tag is from, for any of us, is a large price tag. But it's, I, I, I just think it's about our citizens, our citizens. And our financial opportunities for the citizens, for the people outside our community. Uh, uh, my, my grandchildren moved from Hillsborough to here and they live here now. My grandson was playing soccer. He played on these fields all over this county. And they were, some of them are pretty rough, but they were loved and used. They are loved and used. Um, their, their children and their grandchildren can, can benefit. I'm gonna be long gone. I'm too old, you know?
I'm gonna still be here.
Yeah, you might still be here, but I know I'll be out, out the door. But it's, it's a long-range plan for a long-range, good purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Too long, I'm sorry.
I don't have just a couple, couple of things here, Mr. Chairman. One, I want to assure Ms. Hatch. There's been no discussion about raising taxes. I don't know where that's coming from.
That's right.
No discussion whatsoever about raising taxes. And I will not vote for a tax increase. Um, Mike, you mentioned something about the RV parks. We have discussed this and there, if, and unless something changes, there is no plans for no long-term leasing of those sites, so.
One week.
One week is all there is, just to put your mind at ease on that. Uh, we got people to travel every day to the, from here to go to Dan Nicholas Park. We got traveling teams that travel all over the eastern seaboard to go to tournaments, New York. Uh, we got companies that in the past, not now, in the past, they've looked at Davidson County. And said, that's a nice county, but I don't wanna go there. I don't wanna move my family there because there's nothing to do. I mentioned this Thursday. I talked to a high-end rep with Walmart. And if you like them or not like them, but they're very successful. Who told me, if you wanna invest in, in, in this county, put your money where your resources is. Because then nobody can take it away from you. We got kids sitting in the classroom, wondering what their future holds. And we got people out here that are opposed to a complex like this for our children. But I'm full support of a seventy-million-dollar jail. Now come on, we got to have the jail, so don't think I'm talking against that. But the problem is, we're more concerned with that than we are giving our kids a future for tomorrow. And somewhere to go, families getting them off the front porch and going to a destination that they can enjoy. And then you got businesses that are barely scraping by. Think about what this influx of, of citizens coming from different counties, different states. Coming to our county and patronizing our business and building more businesses. It's, I'm like Commissioner Warford, it's a win-win situation. And as far as putting it off, why? I got to be honest with you, why? We're gonna be grading, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a couple of years to get this thing moving. Is that not enough time?
Can I ask you, sir?
No, sir. No.
You can, we can say, I oppose this and I oppose that. But you can't really find a better place to put the money than in our children.
Amen.
And in our families. You can talk it all you wanna talk it. But it falls on deaf ears when you're talking against where the money really should be. And that's our children and what their future holds. And we have, against all suspicion, brought industries to this county. That I guarantee, half the citizens don't even have a clue as to what we brought because the newspaper won't print it. You know why? Because you got seven sitting Republicans up here and they won't talk good about a seven sitting Republicans. And it's a shame, because the people deserve to know what's going on in their county. And, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, that's all I got to say. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't mean to come across as angry, but I, I, I'm passionate about, you know? Those two coaches sitting back there told it like it is. They deal with those children every day. I know what they're talking about and I know what children need. And I hate to say this, but I'm gonna tell you anyway, I spent fi- I went through five different foster homes growing up. I know what it's like to be poor and no place to go. And this gives our kids an opportunity. An opportunity that they don't have now. We got kids begging for a bowling alley. And to give them something like this and we can speak against it? Uh, I don't understand it, but, uh, I'm sorry, that's just the way I feel. And I respect you enough to tell you how I feel.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know I made a, a motion, but can I comment?
Yeah, 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 we're gonna comment a little bit too, cause. But you can go ahead and comment or I can't either.
You ended up, um, I would just like to say that, you know, I'm, I'm very passionate when it comes to this subject. Um, um, a, a lot of y'all might know Mugsy Bogues. Well, he was, he was my daughter's godfather. Um, we, we took Riley from Atlanta all the way to Indiana. She's played basketball all over the United States. And we had to travel and spend money, lots of money, to go everywhere. Uh, she is a junior in high school right now. And it pains me that she's probably not gonna reap the benefit of this. Uh, but if my grandchild can, if yours can. Uh, the, probably the biggest statement made tonight, uh, Coach Samuel. When you stood up here and you said, the buzz from the kids, immediate, right now. Immediate excitement from the kids, not just at Oak Grove, but at Ledford, at, at, at North Davidson, at Central Davidson. The buzz around our community right now, just for a hope to have somewhere that they can go and be proud of. And if there's one thing that I could have a leaving legacy, because I'm pretty sure all y'all know. That, uh, I'm retiring in two years. I'm not gonna run for reelection. Uh, I've enjoyed this. It's been an honor of my life. But if there's one vote that can cement my legacy, that I can go down and be proud of, it is this one tonight. So thank you and I, I pray to God that it will be used for good.
Okay, thank y'all. Um, I, I'm gonna go back and, um, in, in touch on what Commissioner Shale said. You know, we talked about a sixty-five million dollar sports complex and a sixty-seven million dollar jail. Nobody in this audience has asked for a public hearing about the sixty-seven million dollar jail. Um, a sixty-seven million dollar jail that'll take two million dollars a year to run it would help. I don't know if y'all know, we supply health insurance for every inmate that's in there. We have, we're liable for their health while they're in jail. But again, where did we, as Americans, kinda get crossed up? Sixty-five million for fifteen, how many thousand kids? Seventeen thousand in our system, you just said?
Might as well say twenty thousand ki- well, twenty thousand kids, they got twenty-five thousand seats.
Okay, twenty thousand kids.
How many kids go to charter schools and things like that?
Sixty-five million dollars for- for twenty thousand kids. Um, or sixty-seven million dollars for one hundred beds.
Come on.
One hundred beds. Now, I'm like Commissioner Shale, yeah, we gotta do something with- with our inmates. I get it, it's- it's a tough situation. But, you know, to me, I'd probably build a lot less expensive, um, um, facility, uh, for inmates. It's just me, 'cause I'd rather give it to the kids, okay? That's just me. So again, somewhere along the line, I don't have kids, okay? So I'm just telling you what I would do. If I had kids here, inmates here, I'm gonna invest over here. It's just what I think we should do. Uh, maybe some of those inmates wouldn't be in there if we'd invested maybe a little bit better when they was younger, who knows? You know, maybe there's a bus that comes from the inner city of Thomasville and- and Lexington. Maybe they can get some teams together and carry them down on buses and- and show them they something different. And I get it, there's nothing to do on the streets of- of the inner cities. So again, some of the things we've been doing in the United States for the last twenty years sure ain't working, okay? So, whatever it is, we can look at it. I- I think our President's looking at it now. We can send three hundred and fifty billion dollars for people to die in U- Ukraine, but yet we can't spend sixty-five million bucks on our kids here, uh, in Davidson County. But anyhow, that's where I'm at. Again, I know the sheriff, uh, needs some- some space for his inmates and, uh, I guess that's the society we live in that we're just gonna keep getting increased in inmates. But anyhow, that's where I stand. I don't see how we cannot invest in our children. So, uh, I will, uh, entertain a vote. We have a motion and a second. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
Karen.
Okay, thank you.
Karen was the second. So, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Three to four, the motion carries. So, thank y'all very much.
Can I say- can I say something in her ear? Y'all talk about, uh, voting against it or not against it. The ones who spoke up here were voting to ha- let the people talk about it, did not vote against it.
Don't pretend to know what's in my mind, okay, Fred? And don't projec- don't projec- yes, you do. You projected to them what you thought I was thinking.
Thank y'all, thank y'all, all right?
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, thank y'all. Y'all have a good night. Thank you very much. I know everybody's passionate. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Come on, yeah, yeah, we'll take just a few minutes here.
We- we need a little bit of a break.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. Thank y'all. We're gonna take about a two-minute recess, okay, and turn it into five.
How you doing?
How you doing, Tony?